Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. And welcome, everybody, to our city council meeting tonight. We're gonna have a roll call by your city clerk.
The record shall reflect that all members are present.
The next thing on our agenda is our pledge of allegiance at our invocation by Sister Medlin Fitzgerald with Saint Francis of the CC Catholic Church. Welcome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation.
Let's take a moment of quiet to put ourselves in the presence of Almighty God. Almighty God, I thank you for your presence among us. I thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here this evening. I especially thank you, Almighty God, for your abundant blessings you shower upon us each day, for the gift of life, health, sustenance, friendship, hope, and compassion. I ask a blessing upon our mayor Judy Ritter for the various levels of city officials, staff, and in particular, for this assembly. I'm asking that you, Almighty God, would graciously grant them wisdom to govern wisely amid the conflicting interests and issues of our time, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, a true sense of the welfare and the needs of the people, a good heart for justice and truth, and for confidence in their decisions. Grant them personal peace in their lives and joy in the work entrusted to them. I pray for the meeting this evening, that you, Almighty God, would guide them. Please assure them of your will for them and for the common good to benefit the people of Vista. I ask for a special blessing on all visitors and others gathered here tonight. Almighty God, may they too sense your guidance in the decisions of this assembly, and may all work together for your glory and honor. We ask your blessing as we move forward with hope in the future to strive to make Vista a place where you will be known, loved, and served. Amen.
The next thing on our agenda, I have a Brown Act notice of simultaneous meeting compensation in accordance with the Brown Act. I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing on our agenda is the approval of the agenda by City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
We had a closed session. Our city attorney, Darryl Piper, will bring us out of the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session on item CS1 on today's closed session agenda. No action was taken that's required to be reported.
The next thing on our agenda is a presentation by the Chamber of Commerce on the Strawberry Festival. Brett Schatzenbaugh, Executive Director of the Vista Chamber, will give the presentation. Brett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and city council members. Is there a clicker? So today's presentation is a follow-up to our strawberry festival that we had in May and to bring you up to speed on some of the results we saw. And just to give you a little background, 2009 was the last year that we did the Chocolate Festival. And as you know, we've done a street fair of one sort or another for many years. But in 2009, the last year of the Chocolate Festival, we had 150 booths, approximately 20,000 people who attended the event. We didn't have any special contests or special sub-events, and we had minimal press coverage at that time. So in 2012, this was our third strawberry festival that we had done. We had 220 booths, 55,000-plus attendees, nine different contests, the 5K and kids run, and we had a lot of press coverage for the event this year. As I mentioned, over 55,000 people attended, 220 street fair vendors, which is a 10% growth from the year before, over 1,500 runners in the 5K. We drew participants from two foreign countries, 12 states, five Southern California counties, and 23 cities in San Diego County. And we raised over $8,000 for local nonprofits through the Strawberry Festival. The 5K in particular, 32% of the participants for the 5K were from Vista. Another 35% were from cities along the 78 corridor outside of Vista. 21% were from San Diego County outside of the 78 corridor. Another 12% from Southern California, which means separate from San Diego County itself. And then 1% from Northern California and 2% from out of the state. So what we like about this is the Vista and the 78 corridor percentage, which is very high. Of course, those represent the people who we hope would come back to our community, come back to our restaurants, come back to our moonlight, come back to our theaters and things like that. So that's our highest percentage of participation. And then also the numbers at the bottom, like the Northern California and the out-of-state, those represent the tourist-type folks who are in town for the three-day weekend because it's Memorial Day weekend, and so we're attracting those as well to this event. We were very active in social media promoting this event and promoting, you know, Vista through this Vista Strawberry Fest on Facebook, Twitter, Pinterest, Foursquare, and YouTube. In May, we had 520 likes on our Strawberry Festival, our Vista Strawberry Festival fan page, reached 184,000 people, 148,000 impressions, and over 6,600 people who were talking about us on Facebook. Twitter, 68 retweets, 118 mentions, 155 followers, and 404 people following us. And Pinterest, which I'm still trying to figure out, we had 12 boards, 282 pins, 128 repins, a bunch of likes and followers, et cetera. This number is very impressive to me. We were mentioned 244,000 times online and over 2 million impressions online for the Vista Strawberry Fest. So a whole bunch of people were seeing us through online mediums. We had print media as well. The North County Times did a couple of stories leading up to the Strawberry Fest and one after, and the Union Tribune did one before and one after. We had three different radio stations that were promoting the event, and we got one TV spot on the KUSI morning show. And at that, on that spot, we took Little Cakes and we took California Fruit Wine down with us, and they were on the live morning show with us that morning as well, promoting themselves and the event. From an economic standpoint, after the event, we went out and surveyed local businesses in the area where the Strawberry Festival took place. Gamaro from the Vista Village Business Association and myself personally went out and handed out surveys to over 50 businesses. We only had 12 returned surveys, which is a little disappointing but not shocking. And of course, the biggest impact from an economic standpoint comes from those businesses within the footprint of the Strawberry Festival itself. So some of the reports we had, El Ranchero mentioned that they had 100% increase from a normal Sunday business. Hennessy said 200%. Village Cafe said it's the biggest business day of the year every year. And then a couple of retail businesses over on Broadway, Metaphor Boutique and Standard Records had large increases of business that day. Lampos Pizza, which is getting a little bit farther away from the footprint, you know, had a smaller increase. We did have some businesses mention that business was the same that day as it is on another holiday Sunday. So for instance, Cold Stone or More Tony's, places like that, said, you know, they get a big chunk of business on a holiday Sunday anyways, and so it wasn't that much different than any other holiday Sunday. But of course, the businesses right within the footprint got a large impact. From a direct spending standpoint, the street fair and the 5K combined, we spent over $72,000 to put the event on ourselves, and over 67% of that was spent with businesses in Vista. So for instance, probably the single biggest expense we had was in shirts. We spent almost $10,000 in shirts for the event, and that was spent with a company right there in our, in our business park who screen prints, just as one example. But obviously, there's all kinds of examples of banners that we have to purchase to put the event on, porta-potties we rent, equipment, et cetera, et cetera. So $72,000 we spent and over 67% was spent in Vista. For the future, the immediate future, we see it continuing as a one-day event at this time. We'd like to keep the focus on the downtown area as we have now versus trying to expand it to other venues around Vista. At this point, we think it's still better to grow organically with the downtown. We'd like to continue to expand the events that we do and the contests, et cetera. We would like to expand the music that we do. We've had discussions recently that we might have more, as many as five stages within the footprint of the event and have little concerts going on on all those stages, at least in the evening. And we would like to expand to a 10K in addition to the 5K and attract a little bit more serious runners. One of the good things about our event from an athletic standpoint is it takes place one week before the Rock and Roll Marathon and Half Marathon, and so it's a great way that we can promote it as a feeder event for those people getting ready for those events. That concludes my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
John? Councilman Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not a runner, so I'm just asking out of curiosity and ignorance. Would, you said that some of the major running events are a week after our event. Would a 10K be well-attended, knowing that they're, I mean, does that fit into the normal training?
Yeah, and talking to our race coordinator, so one week after our event is the San Diego Rock and Roll Half Marathon and Marathon. They take place that next week. So you have people who are training for one level or the other. Some people are still building to get ready for their level. A lot of people, though, are tapering. And so when you're in a tapering mode, if you're tapering for a marathon, a 10K is a great tapering run. If you're kind of still building for a half marathon, a 10K could work for that, too. So in talking to our race coordinator, he thinks that would be ideal.
Okay, good. Sounds promising. It sounds like it's been a great success the last two or three years.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor Ritter. I'm pretty involved in downtown with a lot of the businesses and have a tendency to sit down and talk with a lot of the owners. And it seems like in the last year or so, a couple of years, year and a half or so, that things have really been coming around, especially with the VEBA. You know, they've been working with you. You've done a great job. When businesses are telling me they're improving, it's telling me you're doing something good. And with the help of this council, we can continue to improve those events because, I'm telling you, it's talk of, talk of the county around here with Vista, how we're growing and how we're working together. During these tough times, we work together, and that's what it's all about, working together to get ahead. And because without those small businesses doing well, we don't do well either. So thank you for all the hard work that you do, and you're persistent on what you do, and you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Gronky?
Yeah, I just want to follow up what he said. You know, thank you for everything you've done. I've been going to these events since back in the Chocolate Festival and before, and every time I go, I see more improvements, I see more activity, I see more people involved in participating in it. And I think, you know, you said about the future, just focusing on the downtown instead of splitting it all up like you did, I think, last year, and that just didn't work out very well. So I think that's a good, good way to go. And one last thing I do want to say is there is an opportunity for maybe for a larger concert venue, you know. Make sure that you work with the city on that and everything, and we'll get that going.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just like to congratulate you. I think it's wonderful, and it's such a successful event, so I think it's great. So keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, at this time, I'd like to have our new sheriff's captain, Joe Rhodey, come on up and introduce himself to the city council as well as the audience.
What would you like to know from me?
Captain, maybe just a little bit about you and where you came from within the sheriff's department.
Okay. Unfortunately, my career doesn't warrant a PowerPoint presentation. I've been with the sheriff's department 27 and a half years. Worked a variety of assignments, jails, patrol here in Vista back in the late 80s, early 90s. It's actually been 21 years since I've worked here. I've worked narcotics, training division at all levels. Again, being back here after 21 years, I tell you, the changes that have been made to this city are just phenomenal. The downtown area, Corian area, just fabulous. This building here, you guys have done a great job of improving this city. It's quite a bit different. We've still got a great group of deputies. They work as hard as we did back 20-something years ago. Got a good staff over there, two good, strong lieutenants, handful of great sergeants. Deputies are all go-getters, very aggressive. It's not a threat, just to let you know. They are aggressive, and they're, they're trying to keep the streets safe for people around here. It's, it's good to be back. Like I said, 20-something years, a lot of changes, but it's good to be here. Happy to be here.
Any questions? Councilmember Lopez?
Yes, sir.
Well, welcome. Just a quick question. Do you have any relatives in this town?
I do.
Did you go to New York to the family reunion?
I did not. Didn't invite me, I guess. Yeah. Actually, a little history on my family, on my mom's side of the family. If you're familiar with the Foothill, East Vista Way area, Delby Corners, that is my mom's side of the family, the Delby family.
LaFaine or, what is it? Is it LaFaine or what's their?
Actually, I know I have one cousin here, Janice Complain.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's real proud of you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, that's it.
Anybody else, Councilmember Coles? Anybody? Just welcome, yeah. Keep on keeping us safe.
All right, we'll try.
Thank you. Welcome. The next thing on our agenda is our consent calendar. There are items C1 through C6, and items C3, C4, and C6 have been pulled by the audience. Is there any other ones that anyone would like pulled from our council? I said C, what did I tell you? C3, C4, and C6. Any other ones? No? Yes? No? Nobody shaking their head? Okay. Then with that, I need a...
I'll make a motion for the reindeer to present the calendar.
That's what I was gonna say. A second? Okay. Please cast your votes. Most of them pass unanimously for the balance of the consent calendar. So the next item we'll take is item C3, which is the treasurer's cash report for the month ending in June. Do you want to hear the speaker first? Speaker is Chuck Rabel.
Chuck Rabel, retired and Vista resident. Just a couple of questions. I was a little bit shocked to see that we've got an investment portfolio worth $220 million. That's big money. And we're drawing interest at a rate 2% or less. And I, you know, first question is, why do we have an investment portfolio that size?
The investment portfolio includes all the funds managed by the city. So that's redevelopment funds, that's sewer funds. A component of it is the general fund as well as CIP funds. So if you think about it, in terms of operations of the sewer system, for example, we bring in almost $19 million in revenue a year. So that's a component, that $184 million that you see there is a component of the sewer fund. And what might help is we could have our finance manager and treasurer, Dale Nielsen, if the council would like, provide a brief presentation on the portfolio itself.
Okay, please. Mr. Nielsen?
Thank you, Mayor. Turn it on.
I think you're not on.
Turn it on.
Try that.
Look at your screen.
That better? There we go.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Dale Nielsen. I'm the finance manager and treasurer for the city of Vista. Before you this evening is the treasurer's cash report for the period ended June 30th, 2012. As Mr. Rabel pointed out, we have a total investment portfolio of about $230 million, and that's made up of $184 million of funds held within the city treasury that we invest, and another $35.7 million that are bond-related funds that are held at a trustee. Up at Los Angeles US Bank is the trustee that we use for all of our bond funds. The investment portfolio has grown over the years. I can, actually, I looked this, this morning when I first started in 1987. The total city portfolio was about $45 million, with the general fund making up about $7 million, or about 16% of the total. As of June 30th, the general fund has about 22% of the total investment portfolio. Another thing we need to keep in mind is April, May, and June are, for lack of a better term, kind of good revenue months for the city. We have property taxes come in in April. There's some large franchise payments that we receive, you know, late in the year. And then we really have some limited revenue activity that happens during the summer months as we don't get our first big property tax allocation from the county until this upcoming The investment portfolio is, is a pool of funds that's shared among all of the funds of the city. And if you look at page 11 to 12 of the staff report, you'll see a listing of all the various funds that the city has. These funds are established so that we can maintain proper accounting, budgetary, and legal compliance over the funds that we hold for the various purposes. As far as the investment of the funds, we go by our own investment policy and Government Code 53601, which somewhat limits what we can invest in. I mean, we always have to keep in mind, this is not our money, it's the taxpayers' money. So we have a very conservative investment policy combined with the state law, which doesn't allow cities to invest in, let's say, equities, stocks, any investments that mature more than five years. So I know this morning, I saw a chart that showed, like, the five-year treasury bill right now is yielding about 0.89%. So as we all know, investment rates are very low right now, but at, you know, at the same time, we're relatively painted into that quarter, which actually is kind of a good thing because our investment portfolio has very minimal risk. I'd be happy to answer any further questions.
Mayor Bochum Gronky?
I actually asked the city manager to pull this item, too, simply because in my tenure here on the council for 12 years, I think it's doubled. And so it was just one to become aware of where this money lie. When we talk about sewer funds, and we talk about, you know, we just heard that there's $19 million that come in annually, are we having projects coming up pretty soon here? And how much do they cost us?
Yes. Actually, if you look at that page 11 to 12, funds 501, 502, and 503 on that list is the city sewer, and 504, 505, and 506 are the Buena sewer funds. And we have been accumulating resources for a number of years now to save up for these large sewer projects that we are now undertaking.
So, city manager, basically, what kind of numbers are we looking for in projects over the next couple of years for sewer?
In terms of sewer, well, we're going out for SRF loans that we just received for $21 million, likely closer to $35 to $40 million worth of work.
So anytime we do a project, it's a major project?
That's correct. And a lot of our projects are taking place either close to Encina or at the pump stations and the pipes taking the effluent to Encina, which is very expensive.
Okay. You know, and another question is, you know, we talk about the fact we have a structural deficit of $2.6 million, whatever. Why can't we just take it from this $190 million?
Well, as I mentioned, one of the reasons, I mean, yeah, it would make life really easy if we could just take the whole $184 million and throw it into one bucket and spend it on whatever we wish. But the reason we have the whole fund accounting structure is we are really operating almost like, you know, 50 separate little businesses here, and the revenues that we receive in each fund are restricted as to their use. For example, gas tax revenues that we receive from, you know, the sales of gasoline, we can only use those for transportation purpose, or not transportation, but road maintenance and capital improvements. So therefore, we cannot commingle those with the general fund. The state requires that we set up a separate fund.
So all these funds have dedicated accounting?
Exactly. My life would be a lot easier if we could just throw it into one pile, but we can't do that.
The last thing is, you know, in discussions nowadays, you know, we hear about bankruptcies of cities and so forth, but what I see here is that we have very good accounting, things are going very well for a city. And even though there is a $2.6 million structural deficit, that's minor compared to the amount of money we have.
Yeah, we have been making progress on that. I mean, there's no doubt it's been a tough couple of years. We've seen that up and down the state. You know, as we all know, probably was it three or four years ago, Vallejo declared bankruptcy, and then we had San Bernardino...
And Stockton.
Stockton, and then Mammoth Lakes, but that's kind of a weird circumstance. They just got hammered with a huge lawsuit that they couldn't afford to pay. So considering the dire straits that the economy has been in for the last three or four years, you know, 400-plus cities, and we've really, in that time period, have had two of them that have gone down. And we're a long ways from that.
And you said something about chipping away at the deficit. If I recall, back in 2008 or '09, it was like 10 million.
Yeah.
It went down to seven.
We had like a 10 million structural deficit, and, you know, the city manager and the former city manager put together a plan to erode that away.
And when do you think that ultimately would be gone?
Well, we're hopeful by '13, '14, but by '14, '15, definitely. And the city council was part of that the last three years, taking more of a measured approach to trying to solve the deficit problem as opposed to cutting even more programs and services.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Rabel, I'll take you next. Did you get all your questions answered by Mr. Nielsen?
No, just one or two more, one more. The page eight of 12 has got the maturities, and $100,000 or $100 million doesn't mature, will mature between three and five years. That means these capital projects, we're talking about the sewer, they're gonna be delayed. be delayed, it looks to me like.
The projects won't be delayed. What'll happen there is we've taken out state revolving fund loans for most of the Vista projects. We'll use some cash, but a majority of that is loans.
Loans that we pay interest on?
Loans that we pay about 2% interest on to the state, that's correct.
That's wonderful.
In the Buena district, we're not taking any loans, we're paying all those with cash.
The last thing I want to point out is the, hopefully, the gas tax at $3 million on page 11, and the deferred street construction of $4 million. Hopefully, those will get used soon so we can get our streets repaired.
Yes, and as you noticed and pointed out at the last meeting, certain streets throughout the city have been getting repaired, as well as you're going to see Bobier and Emerald capped, as well as Business Park and some of the others. And the gas tax money is used on an annual basis, approximately $2 to $3 million.
Right. That's what we need to do with it. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question, which I think got asked to you through the city manager about the redevelopment fund or bond.
Yes.
And I'm pretty comfortable with the answer that city manager gave me. I'd like to hear a little bit more from you. And then the second question to that is, when I was on the Investment Advisory Committee a few years ago, I know one of the last things that we voted on was to allow the investments in municipal bonds, a limited amount of, and I'd just like to see or hear from you how you feel that's going, and if it's been what you expected, and, you know, with this latest stuff that's going on throughout the state, if you still feel comfortable with having that as part of our investment portfolio.
Yes. On the first item, our investment portfolio here at June 30th does list our ownership of two redevelopment bond issues. One of them is a San Francisco Redevelopment Agency bond, and another one is Indian Wells. Now, the San Francisco one actually matured on August 1st of this year, so we already have that money back. So as we sit here today, we no longer own San Francisco redevelopment bonds. The Indian Wells bonds are listed on here at, I believe, yes, $1,160,000, of which on September 1st, a couple days from now, $570,000 of those bonds have been called. So that will cash, will flow back into our, you know, cash portfolio, and we'll reinvest that. We won't be reinvesting it at 4%, but nonetheless, we'll have that back. And the remaining $590,000 is scheduled to mature on September 1st of 2013. I'm very confident in the city of Indian Wells and their organization there. They're, I'd probably say, one of the better-off cities in the state of California, and if they couldn't afford to make their bond debt service payments, we'd all be in a lot of trouble. In regards to municipal bonds in general, we were purchasing those for a while. I have not bought any in probably a year now. It's not for the lack of trying, it's just finding taxable municipal issues to purchase. They do not come on the market very often. They're not like a US Treasury or a US agency where, you know, any given business day, you can go out and buy an investment in those vehicles. Municipal bonds are hard to find. On the other hand, that's one of the items, reasons they're a little bit more riskier, is in the fact that, you know, if we wanted, if I wanted today to sell my Indian Wells redevelopment bond, I might have trouble finding somebody who wants to buy it. There isn't that continual trading going on back and forth. But since we make sure that we always have good liquidity in our portfolio, we never have to sell something before it matures.
Do you feel that Indian Wells going ahead and calling that is a good sign that the city's in good shape?
Well, yeah, I think part of it too is the piece, the taxable redevelopment bond that we purchased was a redevelopment bond that was issued and backed by their 20% loan mod housing fund. And I think what's going on is that they're just taking their excess housing funds that they may have at this time and using them to call bonds, you know, given the situation that's going on with redevelopment in the state right now.
Okay, so we just got to wait that one out another 12 months?
Yeah. I'm not worried about it at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Certainly.
That's all, Mayor.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Nielsen, what is our rating right now in our city?
Our rating on our 2007 Certificus of Participation, which is basically our general fund rating, is an A-, I believe.
That's pretty good, huh?
It's not bad.
Not bad, huh? Well, being here eight years, we started saving about a while back, and so we knew these hard times were going to come. In your opinion, our deficit is, what's our deficit?
The structural deficit?
Yes, structural deficit.
Right now, it's around $2 million is what we're referring to.
$2 million. If we wanted to, we could, we could pay that off overnight?
We could. We could make that go away tomorrow, but it wouldn't be, it would be very painful to do so.
It would be painful for some of our services, correct?
Exactly.
Yeah. So basically, we're in darn good shape, aren't we?
Yeah, we're managing it, we're growing our way out of it with careful planning.
And that's in a bad economy?
The economy is, you know, dragging on, still dragging on, but we're seeing a few more jobs coming, and we're seeing sales tax starting to pick up, so.
So the economy picks up a little bit, we're going to be in real good shape, aren't we?
Well, it's going to take a while. I don't expect the economy to come roaring back as it has in the past, but I think things are going to get better.
We're looking at about a four-year timeframe, barring any major issues at the national level or state level, but slowly kind of coming out of the funk, and hopefully, we'll reduce the deficit within the next year or two, and then climb out of it.
Yeah. So you can sleep good at night, huh? Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Coles.
Yes, Mr. Nielsen, I also want to thank you, and just to clarify the different businesses, one of the things that our budget, that Dale supervises is the Regional Solid Waste Association budget of the cities of, just to let you know, the cities of Del Mar, Encinitas, Escondido, National City, Palway, Solana Beach, and our own city of Vista, entrust our department to manage all the funds for the regional solid waste management. So that's really not all our money, a portion of it is. And I just got two checks that were given back to us as our share of some bonuses, $1,080 from RISWA, and another $1,000. You have the actual checks, I've got the copies, because they don't trust me to cash them right. But I think it's a testament to Mr. Nielsen and to the city of Vista and our stewardship of our finances that these cities entrust us to manage these funds as well. And we can't use those to balance our structural deficit.
It's about $300,000, right?
Yeah, it's that very one at the bottom there, Fund 709, RISWA.
Okay, so unless you have any other questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
To approve.
Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next thing on our agenda is the application for cabaret license in the Joe Brewing Company, and we have one speaker. So do you want to hear the speaker first? That would be Erica Leary.
First.
Erica?
Do you want to go first or the staff?
Yeah.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to have a few minutes of your time. My name's Erica Leary, I'm the program manager for the North Coastal Prevention Coalition, works in the cities of Carlsbad, Oceanside, and Vista to reduce the harm of alcohol, tobacco, marijuana, and other drugs. I apologize if I'm a little unprepared this evening, I didn't find out about this issue until yesterday, perusing the council agendas. But I did want to raise a few additional concerns for your consideration with this application. Microbreweries, I understand you're supporting the growth here in Vista, but this location is in a business park and not easily observable for passersby. It, breweries, I've been to a few, tend to operate very similar to bars, and allowing entertainment will continue that operation model. That, as far as I know, they're open to all ages, so there's no restrictions for people under 21 entering the business. It also has no food sales, to my understanding. I saw in the staff report that the ABC would limit free samples, but people can purchase additional glasses to consume while they're gone. And I understand the city of Vista provides for mandatory lead training through the ABC, and we help facilitate those classes, but that in and of itself is not sufficient to stem all the problems resulting from alcohol consumption. Just to keep in mind also that alcohol is a product where 10% of users tend to suffer from addiction or dependence on it. It's also associated with the leading causes of death for teens and young adults, including motor vehicle crashes, homicides, and suicides. San Diego County averages 12,000 to 14,000 DUI arrests every year. In a study in Ventura County, of their DUI offenders, 72% of the men arrests, 70, over 70% of their DUI offenders were men, and of those, 72% reported that beer was their drink of choice prior to arrest. Here in Vista, we've had over 125 DUI arrests just in the last six months, and that's over a quarter of all the arrests that have been made in those six months, according to the crime mapping website. I do understand your desire to help business, but just the fact that the beer is made here doesn't mean that the problems go away. Would you have done these concessions and changed zoning laws to allow a bar in the same location? I really urge you to consider the health, safety, welfare, and prioritize our children as you make this decision. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do you want to hear a report, or do you have any comments from the council?
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Gronki.
I was just going to say if I could clarify, Indian Joe Brewing was issued an ABC license from the ABC in June. So this is for a cabaret license, which the council allowed at the last meeting to occur in the business park. And we have put limitations on the cabaret. For instance, most of the cabarets requested include live entertainment, as well as persons of four or more, and in this case, we're not allowing for, excuse me, not live entertainment, amplified music, we're not allowing amplified music, and we're limiting it to three persons or less.
Okay, Mayor Protem Gronki.
Thank you, I just have some questions for the staff. You know, before, the captain mentioned that he had been in Vista before, and I know some of the history of Vista, and there were some pretty sleazy bars in town, and luckily, we closed those down. I fear sometimes with microbrewers that we might be reopening that gate. So I would just want to make sure that when we bring in these microbrewers, they are limited in their time that they can operate, and also the location. And I guess right now, we're talking about bringing in cabaret licenses, even those, as the city manager just said, that's limited in not being amplified, and the number of people that are involved and so forth. So we do have some control over this.
That's correct. We do have some control. As part of the ABC license, their hours are limited, it's not like a bar, it's not open until midnight, it's not open until 2:00 in the morning. And in addition, on this particular issue with the cabaret, it's limited to Fridays and Saturdays, and only until 10:00. So 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM on Fridays, and noon to 10:00 on Saturdays and Sundays.
There seems to be a blossoming of microbrewers within our business park and other areas in town. Is there some that maybe we can stem the progress of that? Do we have control of the number that we can limit within our jurisdiction?
At this point in time, we don't limit the number of them. We figure that supply and demand would, you know, take hold at some point. If the council wished, we could limit the number of breweries that were allowed specifically in the business park.
I think maybe we need to consider that, you know, maybe some type of workshop or something along that line.
Is that a second?
First?
I'm sorry. Is he making a motion there on that one?
No, he doesn't have a motion on that. Councilmember Lopez, do you have something to say?
No, I was just going to say if he's making a motion on that, I'll go ahead. Second.
Oh, you're making a motion?
No, I said if he was making the motion, I would.
Well, do you want to make a motion?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Coles.
I just want to chime in on Councilmember Gronki's comment about looking to at least study or have some analysis of the impact of the microbreweries. I think we were proud of being, you know, getting some attention and profile for some unique microbreweries here, but at the same time, I don't necessarily want to see us drown in a sea of this sort of thing. So, yeah, I would appreciate receiving some information and looking at maybe some way to limit the growth of this industry. What we have is fine, they're doing a good job, they've been good neighbors and contributors to our community so far, but I too have some of the concerns raised by Erica in having this activity get, you know, we don't want to be like some of the coastal cities down where this is the prevailing way of life, so.
I agree. And actually, maybe we could bring the Brewers Guild into that and have a conversation with them also. And I know that, I also want to say, they do, there is food, those gourmet trucks come in and bring their food to the different brewers on different nights, so. And some of them have a following, like online, you can go online and find out who's going to be where when, so it's kind of interesting. So if you have more comments, I would entertain a motion. Is it okay?
I'll make a motion on the item.
Okay. Please cast your votes. Motion passes with Councilmember Coles declining, or saying nay. Okay. The next item is, will be item six, and that is the lease amendment on Sonic Drive-In. And I am going to actually leave and abstain from this as I have a potential conflict of interest on it. So I'll let our Mayor Protem take over.
Mayor Protem, we have John Meyer with the Redevelopment Department to provide a report.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead. Mayor and Mayor Protem and members of the City Council, my name is John Meyer, and I'm the Director of Redevelopment and Housing. For your consideration this evening is an amendment to an existing ground lease between the city and D&amp;M Investment, the owner of the Sonic Drive-In restaurant. The Sonic Drive-In opened its doors in November 2009 and has helped transform the parcels along South Santa Fe, adding sales tax revenue and jobs over the site's previous uses. The lease agreement relied on revenue projections which had failed to materialize, due in most part to the economy. As a result, the developer approached the city to amend how the lease rate increases over the term of the agreement. The terms of the existing agreement provided for more than a doubling of the rent later this year, from almost $5,000 a month to over $11,500 a month. The city retained the services of Kaiser, Marston, and Associates to conduct a fiscal analysis and determine fair market rent. As outlined in the attachment to the agenda report, KMA determined that the rent was in the range of fair market value, and that the increase per the existing agreement would jeopardize the business. While there is no obligation for the city to amend the lease, no change would likely result in the business defaulting, at which time the city would take back the property. From a business standpoint, staff believe it is more prudent to amend the lease terms, thus preserving the existing business and jobs, rather than taking the property back and having to go through the process of re-leasing the property, which would likely produce the same lease rate that is being proposed. Therefore, staff is recommending the council and successor agencies support the modification to the lease, which would result in the current lease of just under $5,000 continuing through the end of this year, and then in January 2013, the lease rate would increase to $5,200, and in January 2014 to $5,200. and in January 2014 to $5,500. In 2015, and every five years thereafter, the lease rate would increase by 12.5%. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
We do have three speakers. Let me listen to those first. Okay, so we'll start with Mr. Rabel.
Gentlemen, first question I have is, the city paid, the redevelopment agency, which is now the city, paid over $1 million for this property. Do the annual, how many, three? No. Anyway, does the annual rent cover the, the, the annual payment that we have to make on the, on the monies borrowed to buy that land?
Yeah. City manager would like to answer that question.
The city paid 1.9 million for the restaurant that was on that property, the former restaurant, and the city used tax increment financing to pay for that, so it's not bond indebtedness that we're paying back, but the lease payments, so they're not, the lease payments that we're receiving are not going towards defusing a bond, rather, it's money that's going into the city, which is being paid back through a loan agreement to the former redevelopment agency.
Okay, that's one. Next one is, we, we're actually in a partnership with this outfit, in that the annual percentage rate is either what the lease says, or, or shall be the greater of 12.5% of gross revenue. Typically, a restaurant tries to get its leasehold expenses 15% or under. Assuming that they do take off, I guess we're, our partnership with them will give us 12.5% of gross. And my question is, is this typical commercial lease? To have, to have it tied to gross?
Yes. Mr. Rabel is referring to the annual percentage rate, which is 12.5% of gross revenues, after those gross revenues reach 2.5 million.
I'm just unaware that commercial properties would, would be doing that. Last question, this came in the mail last week. It's a joint advertising by Sonic of the Vista, Camp Pendleton, and Santee locations, with highlighting Vista. It's pretty expensive. It came in the mail, and my question is, do the, these three outfits are jointly owned, and if the other two are making money, can't we get, can't we get their obligation from those financing sources? Revenue source?
The same property owners have a franchise for all three Sonics, but each one is individually held, so separate and apart, so Santee's not tied to Vista, and Vista's not tied to Camp Pendleton.
But they can do joint advertising.
They can. That's a business decision that they make.
All right. Last question.
Mr. Rabel, this is the last question, because your time's pretty much up, so why don't you just finish?
Yes, sir. Real quick, when Sonic went in, we gave them a payout of their developer fees over three years. Have those developer fees been paid off?
Sonic has an arrangement with the city to pay their developer fees over time. If this agreement goes forward and is approved by the city, the Oversight Board, excuse me, the successor agency, the Oversight Board, as well as the Department of Finance, then they will meet, they will be current on their traffic impact fees at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a, Mr. Silva.
Hello. Good evening, and I do apologize, I wasn't ready for this meeting. I'm here, I got called in last minute, but I do oppose the amendment as stated in the, the agenda. Mainly, reason being, I have a good friend who's a small business owner here in the City of Vista, who's been doing business, has a lease with the city. That lease was verbally amended back in October of 2011 by a city staff member. The business owner was going to close his business, but because the oral agreement of the amended lease was lowered based on the representation of a member of city management, which I believe is Mr. Mullin, the business owner agreed to pay the amended rent. That never came before the council, to my understanding, to the, as the business owner stated, and the business owner decided to remain in business per that agreement of the lower rent that the city agreed to amend verbally. There was letters sent back and forth with this business owner. The business is called The Frame of Art at 325 South Santa Fe, approximately two blocks away from Sonic. Just recently, with the letters back and forth with the city, the city decided to evict the tenant and terminate his lease with a 30-day termination. This is a small business owner, and I'd like to ask why Judy Ritter's not here today on this amended lease before you today. My research has found that the owners of Sonic, which is D&amp;M Partners, may have a relationship with the mayor of Vista. And my question to you is, is that why this is being amended, and we have another tenant, business owner here in the city, that's being evicted because of that?
He just served with the eviction notice last week, I believe.
Okay, I have, I have a question of staff. He brought up the, the question about, does staff have the discretion to renegotiate leases?
No.
What? Excuse me?
No.
No, okay. So, good.
Just to add to that, we don't make verbal agreements, and if we make verbal agreements, we put them in writing and either bring them before the city council or the city manager, and in this case, we just don't get, yeah, we don't get into a back-of-a-napkin agreement type form.
Okay, so if an agreement were to occur, would have heard in a written form?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there's absolutely no relationship between the mayor of the City of Vista and the owners of Sonic. Is that correct?
Nobody said that. Nobody said that. It's, it's, she has recused herself because there is a conflict, yes.
Okay, there is a conflict. Can I ask what that conflict is, please?
Well, there's, she has, she has recused herself because of a relationship between her and someone in Sonic.
A family member is the owner of Sonic, correct?
But that, but that's why she recused herself, so she's not up here voting on this issue.
She's not here making the decision on that.
So she's not voting on this amendment?
No, she is not.
Has she had close sessions with any of you guys regarding this issue?
She has recused herself from close sessions also.
She has, okay. The last question I have is, the owner, Mr. Jaden, complained to the city because he has been running from the city regarding mold issues in the building, and it appeared after his complaint to the city with letters to, I believe, Mr. Johnson and Mr., I'm sorry, what was your name?
Meyer.
Mr. Meyer. That's when the eviction process started. Was there any retaliation against Mr. Jaden or The Frame of Art because of the complaints of the mold in the building?
Mayor Protem, this issue that you have before you see six is about Sonic Restaurant. It's not about any legal issues that the city is in, so I don't think.
Can you just stay on, in fact, in fact, your time is up, so thank you for your time.
Sure, yeah, that's, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay. Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, council. I have a couple of comments or observations on this, this lease. One of the things that it talks about in the summary here is that the development of the restaurant has transformed vacant frontage along South Santa Fe, and that's not entirely true in the sense that the city bought a building and tore it down so this Sonic could be developed. Another comment here is that the lease agreement relied upon revenue projections that failed to materialize due to a variety of reasons, the economy being the most significant. We're all struggling in this economy, but there's no detail here as to what is that variety, and what's the impact of each of those things. So is it bad business decisions? Is it bad marketing? In addition to the economy, is it 90% of the economy impact and 10% of these other things? What are those, a variety of, of reasons that are affecting why they can't pay the rent that they negotiated with the city? Kaiser Marston, great name, he spells it wrong, the guy that did the, the review, doesn't give us details as to the financial reports of the, of the Sonic, and rightly so, they say it's confidential information, we don't want to divulge all that information. But that leaves you guys in a bad situation on trying to make a decision on whether there's enough money there to pay rents that they agreed upon. Another question, can the terms, if we change this lease right now, can the terms change at city's discretion down the road? So this lease goes out for 30 or 40 years at the much lower rates, and matter of fact, within five years, you're going to collect less than one-half of the originally negotiated lease, instead of 3/4 of a million dollars, down to $350,000. Can you go back there in five years when the economy's booming and say, no, we want to go raise your rent again? Or is it, is it only at their discretion that they can request a lease change? One other, two other comments. The, the issue here, in my mind, is who's accepting the risks? We as business people and, and you as city people who own this property are paying these rents, there's a, there's a shared risk here, okay? So the owner of the Sonic took a risk, building this place, investing his money, and is trying to make a business case and make money. At the same time, you took taxpayer money to do the development of the property, buy the property, and make it work. So I understand, and you understand that that's your job. This seems like an awful large decrease in rent. Who's accepting this risk? Are you taking all the risk off of the Sonic owner and putting it onto the city taxpayers?
Mr., I believe your time is up, so.
I'm under warning, right?
Oh, okay, fair enough.
Okay.
There was a number of questions that, did you write those questions down, Mr.?
Yes. And the last quick comment is, as I've, I've been anxious before, and I think the chamber and the VBA are doing a great job, part of this burden relies on the City of Vista, you guys, to make sure that something is happening, that activity is happening, that development is happening in downtown San Diego. If there were more people in down, I'm sorry, downtown Vista, if there were more people in Vista, there'd be more people buying hot dogs and burgers at the Sonic. And I ate at Sonic, I love that restaurant, I love that food, and if, if I had time, I'd go there for dinner, too. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, would you like me to respond to a few of your comments?
Yeah, could you please respond to those questions?
Absolutely. One is, we are trying to protect the downtown and make sure that there's a viable use there. As Mr. Meyer said in the staff report, if we went ahead and terminated the lease with Sonic or left the rental fees intact, it's likely that Sonic would close at that location. If that were to happen, we'd have to go back out to market, we'd have to find someone that has that same type of building use in mind, and we would be renting it out for the amounts that were stated in the Kaiser, Marston, and Associates report. So we'd be in the same, same boat, so to speak, once we found a tenant that was a good fit for that site. So we felt it best to work with Sonic to try to make a go of it. Sonic isn't doing the amount of business that they expected, that's obvious, and South Santa Fe is also not as far along as we predicted or we felt it would be as a result of redevelopment being noticed 18 months ago, that it was going away. One of the questions was, can the term change of the agreement at the city's discretion? And no, it cannot change at the city's discretion, and no, it can't just change at Sonic's discretion. It would be a mutually agreed-upon process to go forward if we wanted to change the terms in the future. And with that, Mr. Meyer, was there anything else that needed to be covered?
No, I have nothing to add.
Mr. Lopez? Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem Gronki?
Not to correct you, Mr. Johnson, but you just mentioned that we paid 1. something for the property?
We paid 1.9 million for the restaurant that was, it was the former Rancho Grande restaurant, yes.
Plus the property next to it?
That is correct. We purchased a property next to it, but the question was in reference to the property we tore down, and that was the property for 1.9 million, and for the property next to it, we paid approximately 1.2 to 1.3 million.
So we paid 3. something million for the properties?
For both properties, that's correct.
3 something. Mr. Myers, when you invest $3 million like that, are we, are interest, are we making enough to cover the, the investment with what we're getting from them?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, when you, when you invest in property, your return, are we at least making enough money on what we're receiving from them to pay our debt? Because we spent money to buy that property, that property, 3. something million dollars. Are we making enough to pay the debt?
Well, there is no debt, because it was, the, the basis of the money was the tax increment, so we're, we're not looking at.
I think the answer to your question, Mr. Lopez, is if there was debt on the property at this rent level going forward, I haven't done the calculations, but I would guess over 30 to 40 years, we may not break even on that investment. However, in this case, tax increment financing was used to purchase the property, there's no debt to compare that to.
So, so it's, I mean, we got the money somewhere, so if we get the money somewhere, we don't just give money away, we, we give money away, but we make money on our money, correct? That's the way most businesses are run.
That's correct, and at the time, and I would say to you, redevelopment, at the time redevelopment was in operation, redevelopment isn't like most businesses. Redevelopment money was used to try to transform an area, to upgrade an area, so to speak, and so it's not a business decision on, we're going to get a return on our investment within four to five years and make money off this deal, it's rather an investment in the area to try to improve it.
Well, now on, now it looks like we're giving him, before it was a 20-year lease, now it's a 40-year lease?
It's always been a 40-year lease.
40-year lease. Does he have the ability, if he can't make it, does he have the right to sublease to someone else on this, on this lease?
I believe he does.
He does with the approval of the city.
Yes. Only the approval of the city, he has the right to sublease, correct?
Correct.
I see it that we're not even going to cover our debt on this. Now, did Mrs. Ritter, she was never in any of the closed session discussing this, I want to clarify that, and she's always recused herself from any decision making on this particular item?
Since the recent discussions within the last 10 months, Mayor Ritter has not been part of any closed session, and she has recused herself in open sessions when anything's dealt with Sonic.
So, now, as far as us reducing the rent on this, these are difficult times, and I can see reducing rent, but I don't see it reducing it as much as we did here, and now you have, now you're reducing rent to half, now you have other businesses going to come that the city owns property, that's going to, to me, I feel like it's going to open up a can of worms for the, the rest of these businesses that lease from the city. So with the, the actual contract that we're doing here with Sonic tonight, I'm not in favor of it, and I will not be voting for it. Thank you.
And Mayor Protem, if I might add, just to that, that we believe that a majority of the property, we're not in, fortunately, we're not in this situation with most of the properties that we own and the rents that are charged. We feel that most of the rents are at fair market value already.
Thank you. Mr. Coles?
Yes, I, I wasn't a part of the council when this began and the property was purchased. I believe you helped, you supported the purchase of that property at, at that price, and I think it's, another thing to remember is that the property itself is an asset, and that's basically all the, the rent that we're charging to Sonic. The structure did, my understanding, they built the structure, that's their structure, it's our property, and, and we have other arrangements. I think Costco is the same kind of, we own the underlying property, Costco owns the building, and that's been a very lucrative arrangement for this, for the city and has worked well. city and has worked well for us. Four or five years ago, the economy was booming, there was a lot of hope and planning for the vitality of downtown, and we've seen a lot of that. And I think we're going to see a lot more of that. I think that staff has done a remarkable job of structuring the arrangement here so that we keep a viable tenant in place, instead of having a shop closure and with nothing coming in. And then I think, as Mr. Johnson said, if we were to find a new tenant after who knows how long, we would not be able to negotiate a rate above what we're agreeing to in this action here. So I want to commend staff for keeping, keeping this part of town alive and viable for the future, and I do support this recommendation. I'll make a motion to do so.
Thank you. Mr. Aguilera?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilman Lopez, I would like to say that you should have thought of those questions when you voted for this and supported this in the past. However, it wouldn't be fair, because the game has changed on you, on redevelopment, on council. Several years ago, when the council, then council, voted to support this, it was a completely different game that was being worked, or, you know, just a different set of rules. And just in the past year, those rules have changed, and they continue to change. I mean, we just were apprised of some rule changes recently. Again, I mean, they're changing by the hour sometimes, but certainly by the day. So, you know, to look at past council and current council and criticize those decisions, it's difficult to do that, or it's not fair necessarily. We've got a bad situation here. And this is why sometimes people don't necessarily support cities or governments going in business with private businesses because of these situations. We've been entrusted with the people's monies, and we're in a bad situation. But I think staff has come up with a great solution, and the solution is to at least get what rents we can get, and it is, it does have to be fair market value. I know that we have other tenants, as the city manager was discussing, we're really, we're not talking about cutting somebody's rent in half, we're just looking at charging them fair market value. And I think that's what we can take to these other tenants and say, we will charge you fair market value. And for some of those, you know, I'm guessing that could go up even. But we do have plenty of empty space downtown, so in this case, we can't really look a gift horse in the mouth. We've got to take the rents that we're getting, we're not lowering their rent, we're just not raising their rent at this point in time, if I'm correct. And in addition to that, there are, the traffic impact fees that Mr. Raible was asking about, those are going to be paid as well. So there's monies that are owed, so I don't think it would behoove us to try to run this business out of town. There's money to be made here, although not what we would like to see, is probably the best decision for the times. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you.
That's a second, if we have, do we have a motion? Okay, then I'll second it.
Okay, and I'll just make some final comments before we vote on it. I was on the council when this came before us. Redevelopment has given us the opportunity to enter into relationships with businesses, and for the most part, it's been rather lucrative for our city, if I think about the Business Park and some other opportunities that we had. We did not anticipate the economy going sour when we went into this, into this agreement, it actually looked pretty sweet at the time. And now we're just bringing it back to more the market level. Mr. Kaiser said something about the city taking on risk. Yes, the city does take on risk at times. We do go into, get into relationships with certain vendors and so forth for the benefit of our city, and hopefully they pay off, and sometimes, you know, it doesn't work out like we'd like it to, but it still works out. The last thing I want to ask is, Mr. Mayor, Kaiser Marston did a study of this, of this organization, which means that they opened their books to the city?
Yes.
Which is not normal procedure for a corporation to open their books?
Correct.
So they're acting in good faith?
Correct.
Okay, I think, I think that's all we need to know, that they're trying to do the best they can under the situation, we're trying to do the best we can under the situation. And the last thing, it came up with the integrity of Mrs. Ritter. And I, again, was on the council when this decision was made, she would never participate in any of the decision-making process, nor was she around when we, when we came up on this particular proposal. So no one should ever question her integrity. She has been removed from this process entirely. So with that, I will call for the vote.
I'd like to speak there. No, I think you're welcome. I had a comment there, Mayor Protem. Pardon? Okay.
And the vote passes.
Okay. I was locked out, I apologize, you guys, I got locked out of all the doors. The next issue on our agenda is going to be a discussion item on the road humps on Brookhaven Pass. So would you like a little, a report on that? Okay, short report.
Thank you, Mayor. John Conley, Community Development Director and Director of Engineering. With me tonight is Sam Hassan, and our traffic engineer, he'll be providing the presentation.
Good evening. So for our item tonight, road humps on Brookhaven Pass, I'll give a little background first, just about the street. So Brookhaven Pass runs between Sycamore Avenue and Fairday Street, and it is a local residential street. It's posted 25 miles an hour. And the alignment of the street, the first 1,200 feet starting at Sycamore Avenue is relatively flat, and then the remainder of the street to Fairday Street has steep grades over 10 percent. So the history on this is, some years back, South Melrose Drive and Fairday Street did not go through, it terminated at their southerly and westerly ends respectively. And then in 2005 and 2006, both streets were open and continued through, South Melrose went to the south to connect to Palomar Airport Road, Fairday Street was continued westerly into City of Carlsbad. So this caused an increase in traffic in the area in general, including on Brookhaven Pass. What started to occur is that traffic, travel in between South Melrose Drive and Fairday Street started to shortcut on Brookhaven Pass. So the residents, in response to seeing all the traffic come through the neighborhood, complained to the city over the years about shortcutting and speeding. And in response, also staff, over the years, employed several strategies, including signage, enforcement, signal timing, but some of the shortcutting and speeding still remained. So the residents requested the city staff to evaluate for the installation of road humps. So just to kind of elaborate on the strategies that have already been implemented to date, we've done signage and markings, 25 mile an hour speed limit signs, 25 pavement legends. Enforcement has been out there regularly to crack down on the speeding. Signal timing, that was one special thing that we did, because a lot of the traffic, what happens in the morning on, at the intersection of South Melrose and Sycamore Avenue, traffic's coming down Sycamore, making a left turn, going in the westbound direction onto Melrose, it gets really heavy. So we optimized that signal timing so that the left turn is facilitated and the motorists are not sort of incentivized to shortcut onto Brookhaven Pass. Also, at the other end, on Fairday Street, a median was installed that prohibited left turns going, coming from the west, and that pretty much eliminated the shortcut and going northbound on Brookhaven Pass. So after the residents requested the road humps, and also over the past few years, we've considered several alternatives, other than strategies that have already been implemented. For example, stop signs, there's a couple of intersections along the way on Brookhaven Pass, at East Brook Road, it comes out, intersects twice. And we did not believe that that would, actually would be a workable solution, because the traffic coming out of East Brook Road is so low that stop signs would not be warranted. And generally, that results in the traffic on the main street, in this case, Brookhaven Pass, would just ignore the stop signs and run them. We considered other physical solutions like islands and curb popouts, you might have seen those on some streets, that forced the cars to go, sort of maneuver between the curb and islands. And one of the things for these devices to be successful is that the on-street parking needs to be used, at least probably 50 percent of it. Brookhaven Pass, even though on-street parking is allowed, it's really not much used at all. So that would leave these devices for just vehicles to kind of just speed through them, and they're become prone to being hit, and they do cost significant amounts of money to build also. Street closure or gate, that has come up, I would say many times over the years, and state law generally does not allow the closure of public streets or putting up gates. So we proceeded to evaluate for road humps, as they are designed to discourage shortcutting, as well as, of course, calm the traffic and reduce the speeds. We have an existing city council policy 600-07 with numerous criteria that a street must pass through, and we found that the portion with the moderate grades, that are less steep than 8 percent, satisfied all the criteria established in the council policy. We've also noted that two collisions actually occurred within the past four years on Brookhaven Pass, both involved vehicles hitting parked vehicles. And that's sort of unusual for this type of road, that's, it's local residential with low traffic volumes. The next requirement in the council policy is for the residents to sign a petition representing at least 78 percent of the properties, and we've received a petition that was signed by 78 percent of the properties, which meets the requirement. So the result of the evaluation is that staff recommends the install of road humps on the flat portion of Brookhaven Pass. That kind of leaves the steeper portion of the road untreated in a way, so what we recommend for that portion going down the hill, which is, would be the southbound direction, is installed in a driver feedback sign, which is those radar electronic signs that show drivers their speeds as they pass by them. This is a map of the street and the area, it's probably kind of hard to see on the screen, but starting at the top, that would be the intersection with the Sycamore Avenue, and you can see the proposed road humps. I'll use the laser pointer, so that's Sycamore Avenue, and this is Brookhaven Pass, and we're proposing four road humps along the flat portion of the street, there's one, two, three, four. And then the street becomes really steep in this portion here, going about 10 percent or so. And that would be the driver feedback sign that we're proposing for southbound traffic. This is Fairday Street down here. This is just a graphical representation of what a road hump looks like, and in accordance with the council policy, the width of the road hump would be somewhere between 12 feet and 20 feet, and the height of it is 2 5/8ths of an inch to 3 1/8th of an inch. So it's pretty broad and flat, you've probably seen those on public streets before. This is a picture of a road hump from the City of Vista, it's the same one, this is kind of a, shows it from a distance, this is a close-up, so you see that, that's the width that I was talking about, this is about 20 feet in width. And the height's kind of hard to measure, it's probably somewhere between 2 and 3 inches. These are some pictures of Brookhaven Pass, this is starting at the north end on, at Sycamore Avenue, looking southbound, just kind of shows what the street looks like. So this is just progressing southbound along the street. This is the portion where the curve starts, this is going around the curve, this is that steep portion, and looking down there, that would be Fairday Street. This is just further south, right at Fairday, you'll see the median here, where left turns into the street are prohibited. So staff recommendation is to approve the installation of road humps on Brookhaven Pass as presented.
Okay, council, we have one speaker, do you want to hear the speaker first, and your questions? Okay, there'll be Floyd, it looks like, is it Graves or Floyd Graves?
Good evening, council. It's been seven years long, what we do for the speed humps, but we finally, hopefully it passes. I would just like to say, if we could, I know there's a council policy in place about the grade, but after talking to Sam and Mr. Conley, I'm hoping that, that the door's not shut, because although it addresses the flat portion of Brookhaven Pass, the fear is, is that everybody's going to, once they pass that last one, they're going to speed up. And the reality is, is I would hate just to, you know, say, fine, we're taken care of, but the bottom portion of Brookhaven Pass, so I'm aware that there is a policy says anything greater than 8 percent, but I'm hoping we can keep it open and still address it, and the door's not shut, I'm addressing the lower half of Brookhaven Pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had a couple of questions. Is the, is the main problem speeding or volume of traffic? If you were going to pick one?
I would say it's really both.
You gotta pick one.
Let's go with speeding.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to walk away. It was the volume at first, but because the median was put in, it somewhat controlled the volume in the evening. But it's, it's speeding, speeding was, was, I would say before was number two, but now it's number one with the, somewhat of the volume, most of the volume corrected with the median. But the speeding is, if you look at that graph again, I live as it starts to bend, and it's really dangerous for my wife and the kids to pull out in the morning, because in the morning, people are just, they're late, and they got to get from point A to point B, and in their mind, they're coming through there to avoid the light. So it's, in the morning, it's the speeding, but it does, speeding happens, I mean, I've been out watering my yard at night, and you'll have somebody just fly through, and I'm not exaggerating, 40, 50 miles an hour, sometimes without their lights on, and... exaggerating, 40, 50 miles an hour, sometimes without their lights on, and a lot of the residents can contest to that as well, there witness it.
Thank you. Mr. Hussein, the, Hassanin, I apologize. The gra, not the graphs, but the numbers that you have on page sixteen of nineteen, they talk about daily speed report, and then also on seventeen of nineteen. So just so I know that I'm looking at this correctly, is that the speeds on top, and then that's the number of vehicles during that timeframe that's, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so we still have a, the posted speed limit is 25 miles per hour, right?
Yes.
So it looks like a majority of the vehicles are at 34 percent, is that right? The totals are, are in that 25 to 29, which I would assume is the acceptable range?
Yes.
And then 33 percent would be, so we have another third, basically, that's speeding?
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, one of the criteria in the council policy is specifically about the speeds, and it says radar survey shows that the measured 85th percentile speed is 35 or more, or 60 percent of motorists exceed 25 miles an hour, so that was met. That's a criteria.
Could you repeat that again?
It's, it says, it's either or, but one of the things is that 60 percent or more of the motorists exceed 25 miles an hour, which was met.
Okay, so that is met, according to the, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, that's number three in the checklist, the.
Right. So we would add up the 34 and the 33, is that, as exceeding?
Right, yes, yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that, that 34 percent would be included. Okay, good. So then my question is, so it sounds like we have a twofold problem, speeding and volume. Seems like the humps are gonna slow the people down on top as they go down the grade, the 12 percent grade. I just think people are gonna step on the gas, and, you know, could you explain why the grade is, is an issue?
Yeah, road humps have generally been associated with problems in steep grades in the past. They're designed generally to be driven over about 15 to 20 miles an hour, maybe 25 tops. So obviously, in a grade, if, you know, vehicles going 30, 35, and suddenly there's a road hump, may not be able to slow down enough, and may, you know, either scared, lose control, maybe even if going fast enough, go airborne over a road hump. That's why you'll see in all the criteria that I've seen where, you know, road humps are being evaluated, they're excluded from steep grades. So we would not recommend them, you know, to address an issue and probably or likely cause another issue.
Seems like we need to scare these people, though. Let's put the hump in there and make them fly.
That's the intention. But the idea is that, you know, to calm the tree, the street as a whole, right, with the four road humps and the driver feedback sign combined with some enforcement down the hill also, you know, every once in a while, to kind of just send the message that overall that the street is 25 miles an hour.
Well, it sounds like we've got some people that don't care about other, that live in that community, so. So I know that this has been looked at, I saw that in the report, stop sign at, is it Eastbrook?
Eastbrook, correct.
And I know that there's probably not enough volume, but really what we're trying to do is, is make it undesirable for people to cut, use this as a cut through. Why can't we do the speed humps and a stop sign right there and just make it so that it's just not efficient to go that way anymore?
And we believe the speed humps, again, one of the main objectives of speed humps, or two objectives really, as a traffic common device, is decreasing traffic volumes as well as the speeds. So that's traditionally what they've been used for, and we've, you know, have informed them. The likelihood is that that's a deterrent enough that a lot of the shortcut in traffic will just leave the neighborhood. So that leaves, you know, the local traffic with some short cutters, and, but they'll be going slowly at least.
Okay.
So we believe the solution of the road humps and the V-COM sign, the radar sign as well as enforcement should address the problem.
Well, I trust your judgment on that. I think if it doesn't work as well as, as planned, maybe the stop sign would be a, a next step.
We can reassess that, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Gronki.
You know, I can recall walking that neighborhood during our campaign years ago and talking to some of the residents, and they were complaining about this fact way back when, or I think it was before Faraday was even pushed through, but they knew it was coming. We're reluctant to put speed humps and speed bumps in neighborhoods. That's usually the last resort. So we've already gone to the Sheriff's Department, they've gone out there and tried to monitor it and so forth?
Yes, they've been out there many, many occasions.
Okay.
And then as well as the, you know, other measures that I mentioned, like the signs, markings, and things like that.
Okay, so this is kind of a last resort, then?
Yeah, I think we've reached pretty much that step in the process after trying all these, you know, other strategies, and still getting the shortcut and then the speed and to, that's still happening.
Looking at the nature of these speed humps, they're really not elevated that, you know, high and so forth, so it's not gonna be made some major braking before then, anticipation, it's gonna be rather a smooth ride. I, I fear for, for the resident that lives nearby them, and, you know, the screeching of brakes, but I don't think we're, that's gonna occur.
It shouldn't be, again, they're designed to be traveled at about 15 to even up to 25, really. Generally, people go over them about 20 miles an hour, so it's not a big reduction in speed. And they're similar to ones we have in town, like on Latutuga Drive, for example, or Cortez Avenue. So they're, they're, you know, they're broad and about three inches in height, so they're, they're kind of a smooth curve to go over, but they will require a car to slow down, though.
Okay, which is exactly what we want to do here. We want them to slow down.
Right.
I, I wish we could do something for the neighbors that live down on the slope of the hill, but I understand that there's a restriction to that, so. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor. Do we have anyone here from the fire department that could, that could ask some questions?
Yes, the chief is available.
Please.
Chief Fisher is available.
I'll start asking the question on your way down. Those speed humps like that, when we have the fire trucks going through there, since you have so many at, at one time there, is there a possibility that that, it can be damaging to the fire trucks?
Yes, it could, and good evening, Mayor and Council, it could be. I'm Gary Fisher with Fire Chief with the city. What those speed humps require us to do is to slow down almost to a stop right at each one, and so it takes us some time to get over those. If we hit them too hard, it kind of launches the front end and could do damage to the, to the vehicles.
Now, does it, how much is, those fire, or those that are there, how much would it slow you up in the case of an emergency? Would it slow you up enough in an emergency?
It depends on, it, it does slow us up. You know, we're, we're not, we're not a big fan of speed humps as a fire department, but we look at those on a case-by-case basis. In this particular case, the call down there in that area is low. It's not a feeder or an arterial street, so it really just affects that neighborhood. But it would depend, to get to your question, it really depends on where the call would be, and how many speed humps we have to go over, because we stop, we pause, and it's a few seconds for each, each one. And so depending if we're going to the other end, you have to go over all of them, it could conceivably slow us down 30 seconds to a minute.
So the street below it, what was the name of that street again?
There's Eastbrook.
Well, the one that would be east, east of that, that goes down.
Eastbrook.
Well, I can't see, I can't see the names here on this. Now, would it be better for them to, the fire department, to have a permanent area to go, I mean, to go through there and, and still pick up the time than to go up through that street?
Probably not, because by the time you go all the way around, it's gonna take as long as if you just went down the street.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then on, I'm gonna ask them a question now. On signage, the, where are you gonna put the signage for the hump, stating where the humps go?
So we are proposing two signs, one sign in each direction. At the beginning of the set of humps, just one yellow sign that says bumps ahead, and then we're proposing pavement markings that say bump on the pavement in advance of each hump. So it'll be just two signs total.
So no signs on, in front of people's properties?
Well, I mean, the two signs will be in front of, I mean, just like typical road signs, they'll be behind the sidewalk, not in, not on the private property, but just behind the sidewalks, and we try to put them between houses so that they're, they're not in people's windows or front doors.
If this doesn't work, then you're talking about putting stops, stop signs. Now, stop signs are not as effective as humps, because when, when, when you have a, a straightaway like that, people have a tendency to go right through them. So they could be a problem versus the humps?
And that's generally why we avoid stop signs for traffic common. We'd rather use them just for intersection issues, you know, right-of-way assignment, accident problems at an intersection, and we'd rather go with traffic common devices. But what we're saying is that if there's still issues after, you know, this, we'll have to reassess, you know, what other measures we can take.
Yes, well, I think it's time we put those speed bumps there. Thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Coles.
Thank you. First of all, I, I want to congratulate staff for working for a long time with many, many solutions at hand, and to come up with something that is not the best, but it's probably the only workable one. I'm surprised that enforcement hasn't made a big difference, because, you know, people who are commuting and get a $400 ticket for speeding, that usually either redirects their path or really slows them down. And so I, I would encourage continued enforcement in that area, because people are always finding another quicker way to go. And I also, the comment about putting the speed bumps on the, on the steeper slope, it, it, it sounds, you know, like let's, let's get those guys that are doing it. The problem is, cities always get sued when you have something, an innocent bystander or property damage is, you know, lost or injured as a result of that, and they go for the deep pockets, which is the city, and, and all the, the data shows not to do that there, and it's pretty hard to defend yourself in court. So I, I know that that was a consideration, but you have to face reality. So let's see how this works, and I would like to maybe get some feedback from the, the people in the neighborhood in six months or so to, to see if this has made a difference. But we, we do need to slow that down through there.
Would that be a motion?
Yeah, it's a motion to approve this recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, and where'd Councilmember Lopez go? Do I wanna wait for him to vote, or should, oh, here he comes. I mean, just, I, I wish we could do it on the downhill part, but I, again, I think it's a safety item there, but let's see how, once people find out they're on the top, then let's see if maybe that doesn't slow them down on the, on the downward. And there's another street, Thibodeau's like that, when you get off the freeway and go down Thibodeau, it's like it goes downhill, 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 and your car just picks up speed, but it's, here, it's all those houses are there, so it's a safety item, really. But anyway, we'll go with what you guys, we'll go with the staff recommendation, and I'll support that. And then we'd like to hear from you maybe in six months and see how, how that's working out. Okay, so cast your votes. Okay, that passes. You will soon have speed bumps. The next item on our agenda is our, is a discussion item. No, it's public hearing. Okay, wait, let me get my glasses on here. So it's public hearing, Appeal of the Planning Commission's Approval of PC eight dash two thirty-six Melrose Wine and Spirits, and I'll open the public hearing, and I'm just, do you want to do speakers first? We have, we have 20 speakers. Okay, let's do, let's do a staff presentation first, and then we'll do the speakers, is that okay?
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, council members. I'm Patsy Child, City Planner with the Community Development Department. The item before you this evening is concerning an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval for Melrose Wine and Spirits under Planning Case File A dash two three six. The proposed project is a request for special use permit to allow sales of alcoholic beverages for off-site consumption at 2215 South Melrose Drive, Suite 109. The SUP or special use permit would allow then for either license type, a type 20, which is a beer and wine license, or a type 21, distilled spirits, general sales, to be issued by the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. The type 20, the applicant has currently applied for type 20, and they would hope to apply for type 21 if in fact the SUP is approved. As part of the proposed project, the, they have proposed some tenant improvements within the 1,300 square feet of floor area, the tenant space, and that'll be comprised of adding counter area space, shelving space, a walk-in display cooler, as well as a small storage area at the back of the unit. Prior Planning Commission action on this particular project occurred on July 17th, when the Planning Commission approved the special use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-site consumption for Melrose Wine and Spirits. There were two modified conditions pertaining to the sales of alcohol to take place between 9:00 AM and 10:00 PM, rather than midnight, and the second modified or added condition was pertaining to setting specific hours for delivery to the site, and also limiting where the delivery can't take place after certain evening hours. Then on July 30th, an appeal request was submitted, filed by a neighbor representing the neighborhood of Mountain Pass and Brookhaven Pass, which brings us here tonight. On this aerial photo, just wanted to depict the uses that are existing. The project site is shown in yellow, and there's the Chevron Gas Station to the east, the Marriott Hotel as part of the Melrose Square Shopping Center. We have residential uses to the north, the west, and further to the east. Across the street on Melrose, there's the RV boat storage, and I'm sorry about the picture, it is old, so it does not depict that project site there. We also have commercial uses to the south of Sycamore under Premier Crossing, dental offices, medical clinic, animal clinic, et cetera. The subject site is Zoned E1, which is part of Specific Plan 24, and that's equivalent to a C1 zone, which is our general commercial zone. It is also designated general commercial in our general plan. Just to depict a proposed floor plan and changes to the tenant space, they'll be adding a counter area at the front, and also a walk-in display cooler and shelving spaces depicted on this slide. In terms of the alcohol sales for off-site consumption and the process of analyzing the request, staff looks at major factors related to crime index and over-concentration. Based on information we see from the Sheriff's Department, the high, the, whether it's a high crime beat area or not, basically provided the information that they are located, the proposed project site is located in Beat 319, which has a crime index of 98.2 percent of the citywide average. An index greater than 120 percent of the citywide average would indicate that that would be a high crime beat area. So in this case, a 90.2 percent of the citywide average obviously indicates a not a high crime beat. As far as over-concentration issue, the subject site is located within Census Tract 198.06, which according to information received from ABC, basically allows for a total of seven ABC off-sale licenses, and currently, we can find two existing off-sale licenses within the Census Tract area. And it's basically the Albertsons and CVS Pharmacy on South Melrose Drive. So again, it's not an over-concentrated area, and, and that is part of the analysis in terms of staff making determination whether we can recommend the project for approval. I just wanted to depict here on these two maps, to the left is the 2011 Crime Index map by Beat, and just kind of blown up section there showing Beat 319, which again has a 90.2 percent. And to the right of it is the Census Tract 198.06, which again shows the two licenses, off-sale licenses that are currently found in the Census Tract area, the Albertsons and CVS Pharmacy, north of Rancho Buena Vista High School. and CVS Pharmacy, north of Rancho Buena Vista High School. And the third triangle just down South Melrose at Sycamore is the location of the proposed Melrose Wine and Spirits. It's about a mile and a half away from the existing off-sale licenses. I included on this slide some of the major conditions from the shares department that they have imposed on this project. The first bullet is about the electronic locks and having them provided as part of the coolers that contain alcoholic beverages. So, basically, they are electronic locks where the attendant, the cashiers, would have to verify the identity of the customer, the ID, and also age. And allowing that person then, through the push of a button underneath the counter, to allow the particular cooler to be released, and therefore would allow that customer to then approach and, and obtain the item. The sale of alcoholic beverages would then be permitted between 9:00 AM and 10:00 PM, as mentioned previously, instead of the usual midnight timeframe, which was, again, something that was changed during Planning Commission at the, at the hearing on July 17th. And the other condition is possession of alcoholic beverages in open containers and consumption would be prohibited on or around the premises. We also, as part of the condition, the shares department, no single sales of beer, only manufactured, prepackaged, multi-unit quantities will be allowed for beer, wine coolers, pre-mixed, distilled spirits, cocktails. No coin-operated games or video machines allowed on the premises. There will also be a requirement to install and maintain a video surveillance monitoring system, and no exterior advertising or signs, or interior displays for that matter, that are visible to the exterior promoting alcoholic beverages. The applicant had asked staff to include a couple of photos from the other store that they own in Encinitas called the Village Spirits Shop. So, I just included on the slides to give you an idea of their other store and how it is in Encinitas. With that, the staff's recommendation is for City Council to adopt resolution approving the special use permit for the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-site consumption at 2215 South Melrose Drive, Suite 109. And this concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, we have 20 speakers, so, do you want to hear the speakers? And I would say the speakers, we actually have 15 speakers in opposition, so, and, and actually, a lot of us have met with a lot of, with some of you guys, and so we, so it's, everyone, please keep to their three minutes. It's, that's like, if you do all, if all of you speak, it's like a good hour, maybe hour, 20 minutes of, of your, you know, speaking. And also, so maybe you could just each, if you can make different points, would be helpful too, rather than just repeating.
Mayor, could you let them know that they're not able to trade times either, or reserve times for other people?
Okay, and you're not able to reserve times for other people. That, you know, trade times or reserve times for other people also. So, just to move it along because it's, it's like 7:30, so, before we even get to talk about this, it's going to be like quarter to nine, probably 10 to nine. So, if you could just kind of do, bear with us on that. What you have to say is important to us, and, but after we hear, you know, 15 of you, 10 or 15 of you, the same thing over and over, it, we, we get your point. So, starting, I will start with, start with, I'll start with Terry Lathrum.
City council members, my name is Terry Lathrum, and I am the owner of the retail center and the Marriott as well. And I will keep this quick. And I just want to give a brief history of, of the project itself. In 2006, we were approved by the city to develop the parcel at the corner of Melrose and Sycamore Avenue for a large retail center. After listening to the feedback of the surrounding Vista community and their concerns about noise level, increase in traffic, we decided to change our approach and figure a way to shrink the project and address the traffic and noise issues that they voiced to us. We decided to reduce the size of the retail center and develop a hotel on the site, which would have a much less negative impact on the community. So, we were good listeners. We held meetings with the South Vista Community Group, seeking their guidance on what the community would like to see in this development, and what other measures we could take to address their concerns. We also had two other meetings at, I believe it was Nikki Hobson at that time, at her home, which we invited the local community as well. I brought my contractor, my architect, color renderings, elevations. We explained what, what was approved and what we had planned. The retail was discussed at length, and the type of individuals that we'd be having to try to attract into our center as well. After those meetings, we communicated with the community through the South Vista Community Group via flyers, updates, et cetera. We wanted to keep them updated on a weekly, monthly basis to keep them informed what was going in their backyard. We wanted to be good neighbors. At the last meeting that the, the Planning Commission hearing earlier this month, there was an issue brought up about myself as a developer and not living in the community and not being involved in the community. Our, our business motto's always been service to the community without recognition. But I do want to let the, the community members know and the neighbors know that my wife and I spend five days a week on site on that property. We're involved in the Operation Hope for the Homeless in Vista. We donate to the Rancho Buena Vista Women's Basketball Team. We're involved in the Vista Chamber of Commerce, and my assistant general manager is ambassador for the Chamber as well. We employ up to 30 people at our high time during high season, and three of those walk to work from where they live, so they live in the community as well. We have generated over a half a million dollars in TOT taxes that directly benefits the city of Vista and the community as well. Our selection process in that project, we wanted to be very selective in that. And we were very fortunate during a very down economy to be able to do that. It was painstaking, but we went through that, and we wanted quality tenants in there. You know, we have the Marriott Town Place Suites, we have the Starbucks, we have the Mrs. Taco, we have Cadence Cardio, we have Peekaboo Salon, we have Zardo's, which we're starting tomorrow. It's an Italian restaurant, and we have Rice King as a letter of intent. But we've tried to be very selective on who, the type of tenants that we put in there. And again, we want to be good neighbors, and we want to work with the neighbors, we want something that they can be proud of as well, along with myself and my family. We were proud of what we do and what we develop. We've been approached, and were approached over the last year and a half.
Terry, you need to wrap up, okay?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, we've had massage parlors, cheap cigarettes, 99 cents stores, bail bonds, and such, that for, that came to us, and we turned them down. And we will continue to do that. We want to be selective. It is a down economy, but we have been selective. And I think this, this wine center with the restrictions placed upon them, not only by the city, by, by the ABC, it's, it's really not a liquor store. I, I look at it more of a bev- moment, a community area where they can go and get snacks as well. Last but not least, I want to thank the Board of Directors of the South Vista Community for supporting this project and endorsing it as well. And I am available for any questions that anyone may have.
Councilmember Gronky has a question.
Yeah, Mr. Lathrum. We did talk, just like in the last week or so, just as we talked with residents of the neighborhood. And although you went through the list rather quickly, you did point out that you have been approached by a number of other vendors that would love to have that site.
Absolutely.
Yeah, probably to the detriment of that site. So, we appreciate that. And, and just to go along with your, being a good neighbor, I, I haven't really fielded any complaints about that center, and certainly the hotel, because you would think, and when I first walked that neighborhood, people said, you know, this hotel's coming in, that's going to cause problems. But I just really haven't got that sense.
Well, you know, the, the hotel and the retail itself, I mean, the hotel is, is a Marriott product, and, you know, our average daily rate range from anywhere from $139 to $219 a night. So, it's not a, you know, it, it's a well-established hotel. And it is geared towards the business park and for the leisure travel as well.
Any other questions up, Terry? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our first speaker will be Tyler, Tyler Lewis, our second speaker, Tyler Lewis, followed by Renee Glasbough, followed by Michael Honeycutt. So, if you could just, when the one speaker is getting done, if the other one could come up, and I'm going to hold you to your three minutes. First one is Tyler.
Good evening. Okay, so, even though I'm a minor, I still think that this shop should totally be allowed to go in. I mean, it's a fine wine. It's not just a, you know, that liquor store that you see in a bad neighborhood or something like that. It's just another person trying to make a living, opening up their business in another place to make money. I mean, that's, I mean, that's what we do, I mean, in America. I mean, you know, it's rocking, I mean, just don't look at my t-shirt. And, and I got to say, I mean, the Starbucks down there, oh, man, I go there all the time. I love the Starbucks. And even though I couldn't go to the fine wines place now, because I'm a minor, I perhaps would go there another day in the far future, distant future. So, I would like to see that place open so that's way somebody can, you know, have a chance to succeed by expanding their business further. So, yeah, I think that would be cool to see happen. Anybody's, you know, opportunity, man, like grabbing that out of the air, yeah, putting that money in the pocket, making a living, working for your family, and that's what that's about. And that's why I think it should be put into that little area where all those nice little restaurants and stuff is, it's really cool. Anyway, thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. The next speaker is Renee Glasbough, followed by Michael Honeycutt.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and staff. I visited the site this afternoon at 3:00. And as a taxpayer of San Diego County and Sandag for 39 years, a vote no would be justified. The mission statement of Sandag needs to be followed. The 18 cities and government and county government of Sandag, the San Diego Association of Governments, this public agency serves as the forum for regional decision-making. Sandag builds consensus, makes strategic plans, obtains and allocates resources, plans engineers, and builds public transportation, and provides information on a broad range of topics pertinent to the region's quality of life. The needs of the Marriott Hotels guests, appetites, and drinks should not come before the welfare and safety of the surrounding hard-working taxpayers, the community, who genuinely protested to you on PC-8-236 for not to have the alcohol area there. Criminals will come, and they're not very nice. As a local convenience store in Vista, the criminal came with a knife, and luckily he was apprehended. So, remember what Vista is about. It's about safety. At your strawberry festival, you had the, on the bloodmobile. So, think about that, please. It's safety first. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glasbough. Michael Honeycutt, followed by John Verick.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Obviously, you know, I am opposed to this. I stand in opposition today to this establishment in our neighborhood, and this is our neighborhood. Despite what Mr. Lathrum says, he does not live in this area, he doesn't have a vested interest in the families in that area, even though he said that he went out and canvassed, or he had the South Vista communities. I, I received nothing from them, as well as some of my neighbors have said that they have not received anything. I don't even know who these people are, I don't know who they represent. I did look them up on the internet. I see one person that sits on their board that lives in the California Summit where I live, on Eastbrook. So, I mean, to say that they speak for that whole community is not, is not accurate. I stand in opposition. I don't think a liquor store is appropriate for this location. When they did the, the ABC, they said there was only two establishments that have on Melrose there, the CVS and the Albertsons. I know that Melrose is cut in half, but there's an AMPM right across the street from the, that sells liquor and beer. It's right across the street from Albertsons. I know that it's not in that census area, but there's plenty of liquor in that area if you want to find it. Also, I know that that, the, the reasons, it came up after the Planning Commission meeting, or after I had spoke at the Planning Commission meeting, the reasons, well, one of the big reasons was, is, is because of the hotel there. The people are in that hotel, they want beer and liquor, they've come to that Chevron station, they're looking for it late at night. We've discussed, we've all discussed this with you guys in the past few weeks, and we, we don't feel this appropriate. Yes, the Starbucks is fine. My kids go down to the Starbucks too, you know, and they drive their bikes in that area. I don't, but I would never bring my child down here to say, to put a liquor store, and I'd never do that, even though she is opposed to it. I, I just feel it's, it's just not right for this, this neighborhood. It's just, the, the pictures that they showed you of that, I think it's an aerial picture, it's an old outdated picture. I mean, there's a lot of other buildup that's gone up in their area. There's a storage area that's gone in over there, that's not shown on that picture. I know if I could, I could go on Google right now and show you a Google map, it's even a better picture of that. So, it's a little misleading, and also, the, also the ABC thing is misleading too. So, there's plenty of liquor stores, the people at that hotel want their liquor, they, I'm sure they can find it, they can go to the CVS, okay, the CVS, the other places. Anyway, we've spoken, and I've spoken, and I oppose it. Thank you.
Thank you. John Verick, followed by Simon Hogan.
Yes, um, thank you for letting me speak. Yeah, I'm, I'm here to definitely oppose to this liquor store, and it's a liquor store, it's not a fine wine, they sell liquor. I'm, and this is to give you my back, I'm a bartender. I, I work at La Costa Resort and Spa, and for 23 years as a bartender. I understand liquor and the effects that it has on people. I do not want to see those elements coming in my, my neighborhood, my backyard. I mean, you're basically allowing, you know, basically where people are going to be grabbing a bottle of vodka and sitting on the curb, you know, in my neighborhood, drinking vodka. I mean, they say it's not allowed, it's going to happen. It's, I mean, it's just going, it's going to happen. So, I have always felt proud of the city of Vista. I mean, that the city of Vista is a family-oriented community, the Wave Water Park, city, you know, things, to propose that, you know, that adult businesses should always be away from neighborhoods, not right next, literally, it's in, right behind people's houses, right in their backyard. I mean, right behind their house, it's, wouldn't be correct. Like I said, for the consumption of alcohol, they, they do, they have Albertsons, they got the CVS, they got Stater Brothers, they go buy it. If they want to drink, they got Iron Fist Brewery now, just right there, it's not even a, probably a block or two, I mean, it's a fine establishment. Establishments that are going to serve food with alcohol, I wouldn't be opposed to. You know, the Nucci's, a little restaurant, Italian restaurant, that's going to serve wine, beer, cocktails, while they're serving food to the people, that's, that's a nice establishment. That's what kind of establishment I would like to see for that, that, that corner, would be, I think that the owner of that is wrong. I, I, if I owned that, I wouldn't want a liquor store, I would want nice restaurants in there. Nice restaurants that are also going to serve food to his guests and not just liquor to their guests, where they're going to have security problems in their hotel. You know, where, so, I mean, those are the points. This is also a high-growth area. There's all of North Oak, you know, Carlsbad is going to be developed, that's sitting empty all along Faraday. This is extremely high-growth area that is going to explode when the economy takes off, going to bring a lot of more traffic and a lot more, you know, problems to that area. And I'd like you to be aware of that, but also think about the future, not just what's going on today, and what the, the high growth of that area, it's, it's, it's going to be huge. It's going to be a lot of hu, hu, big, large traffic area.
I need you to wrap up.
Okay. And it's just, like, that I'm opposed to, you know, thanks.
Thank you. Last, Simon Hogan, followed by John.
Could I ask you a question?
Oh, sure. Councilmember Coles.
As I understand, this is a, for wine and beer, and in the future, there, there's an intent to apply for, for a further license, but this is not hard liquor at this point? It's wine and beer? I just wanted to clarify that for the, from the comments that were made.
Sorry.
We should respond to that, Councilman Coles. They are asking for approval of both Type 20 and 21 licenses this evening, so, they've applied to ABC for the wine and beer, but they intend to apply for the distilled spirits as well, and they're asking for the city for both tonight.
All right, thank you.
Okay, sorry, I think I said your name wrong.
Simone.
Simone, thanks.
Happens all the time. I am opposed to this because I live in this neighborhood, I have children. My concern is there's a park nearby, and there will be drunk people laying around in that park. I know- I know that will happen. I'm from a country that does not prohibit public drinking, and it's not a pretty sight, I guarantee it. I also would like to comment on that map that was shown. It is all open space. If you know Vista, you know that that is our little community and the Albertson Shopping Center, and mostly Rolling Hills with a couple of industrial buildings. There is a, um, a fine wine and liquor store two and a half miles away from this location. This store's not needed. I agree also that the people that live in the hotel can get their wine and beer at the restaurant, and that is the kind of consumption that I can tolerate. I do not believe that even the owner of the property would want the hotel people to buy bottles of whiskey and take them to their room because there might be property damage, there might be vomit at the pool. You know what public drunken looks like. If they get liquored up in their room, it's not gonna be pretty either. And I don't want my children to walk around at the park, and, you know, at the very least there's gonna be nuisance, and it does not fit. I appreciate that the development has taken time to put nice businesses in there. This doesn't fit. It does not fit. Let's have another restaurant. Let's have a ice cream store. I'm all in favor of something like that. You're dealing with a patch of land that is developed after a community has been there for twenty years. That shopping center does not exist in a vacuum. You need to listen to the people who live behind it, and I see it as an opportunity to work Vista community. My kids go to the Starbucks. I go to the Starbucks. I get my croissant in the morning for breakfast. So, if we put something in that the neighborhood agrees with, the shopping center can be part of the neighborhood instead of something that antagonizes us. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing. I brought my middle schooler here today, not to impress you guys how many kids we have, but because she was actually interested to see civic action, and so I urge you to make the right decision.
Thank you. John, is it Honor Par? Did I say it right? Followed by Shannon McCormick Benner. John.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Uh, it was about a, two years ago, a little over two years ago, that I was looking for a property and came across this neighborhood. At that time, the hotel wasn't established. Uh, the neighbors were saying that this is gonna be a very nice area, and the establishment's either gonna be a mall, or even if it's gonna be a establishment, it's gonna be a two-story. By the time the contract was signed, there was a three-story, uh, hotel, and right behind my wall, there was a sixty-foot wall of a hotel. But, um, the reason I'm here is that after I've found out about the announcement that there's gonna be establishment of a liquor store, uh, at first I thought, well, no- nothing about it, till I started looking at the Internet, and you probably have some of the, uh, reports and everything in front of you, that, uh, it definitely does not improve the quality of the neighborhood. There's arguments whether it, uh, it, it does a negative impact, but it definitely does not improve it. Uh, in fact, I've got at least a lot of the other reports from Southern California, both from, uh, researchers, but my time doesn't allow me to go through all this, but at least I have ten here, that they all undisputably represent that the, whether it's a high socioeconomic study or, uh, in the low socioeconomic environments, it definitely increases in property crime, uh, and it lowers the, uh, quality standard of the living. And in every area, closure of the liquor stores, uh, has had a low socioeconomic, uh, basically a decrease in property crime. So, whenever there was a closure in a lot of the comparable neighborhoods, there was actually a decrease in property crime. So, uh, I've got the statistics, how much it increased, but I don't have time to go through this, but I wanted just to go over the three main things that would make us collectively make this decision. Definitely the improvement of the neighborhood. Undisputably, you know, it's not gonna improve the neighborhood quality, go to crime, safety, and, uh, providing a service. I mean, when I look at our neighborhood, at least three hundred people, um, hundred signatures, each, each signature represents at least three people in their family that they oppose this. So, I don't know, they're saying that it doesn't provide a service. If I go across the other side, that's another two, three hundred houses that they, at least two hun- twelve hundred constituents total, that, uh, they would oppose this. And, um, I, then again, that's another risk factor. So, the first risk factor is that it doesn't improve the neighborhood. Second, it doesn't provide a service, uh, at least to our community.
And I need you to wrap up.
Okay. Um, one of the, last time I spoke with the councilmen, I, there's one thing that, uh, that occurred, and I asked whether if each one of you, or yourself, were living in that neighborhood, would you actually vote for or have a liquor store? And the councilman said, no, but this is a business zone. So, um.
So, your, your time is up, sir.
Okay. Just do to others what you would have them do to you, and this is the golden rule, that's, uh, at least there's ten other communities and religious groups that have the same exact model.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Shannon McCormick Benner, followed by Lon Sellers.
Thank you so much for hearing us on this issue, and we are opposed to it. Thank you so much to my neighbors for the appeal that they've done for this. And when I was first told about this liquor store, I was from my heart opposed to it, but I also went online and did the research about it, and the statistics speak for themselves in terms of the crime increase that clearly happens when a liquor store, um, is established. Um, you can see that the neighborhood is in such proximity to this area, and especially now that I've heard about the evidence of the traffic going through Brookhaven Pass from this area, I know that these two areas are intertwined, and I'm concerned about what this will bring to the personality of our neighborhood. There are many children in this area, and I would prefer something that would, um, another business in there that would support the, um, personality of our neighborhood. I often go and walk my children down to that park. I walk them to the Starbucks. We go to Mrs. Taco. I want something in there that we don't have to avoid, somewhere that I can take my children to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Lon Sellers, followed by Dale Simpson.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. This is my neighborhood. I've lived there for fifteen years. I've seen a lot of development in this area. Tonight, we talked about putting in speed bumps on Brookhaven Pass to slow the traffic down for the people that are cutting through. I submit to you that you're gonna have people going to this liquor store that I oppose. They're gonna be leaving there with open bottles of liquor, and they're gonna be speeding down that street, and there's children on that street that don't need to be placed in danger, and I think that is just inviting a major problem for our neighborhood. I will heartily disapprove of this, uh, move to open a liquor store in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dale Simpson, followed by Dave Urban.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Ritter. Uh, my name's Dale Simpson, and I'm in the wine and spirit industry. I'm a sales rep and merchandiser for a, a large company, and I live in the neighborhood on Brookhaven Pass. Actually, I live right next door to Floyd, and I can guarantee you that the traffic is gonna increase. Uh, Mr. Latham has done a wonderful job in that center. But as a seller of wine and spirits, fine wine and spirits that I sell, um, throughout North County, I cover from the west side of the Five Freeway all the way out to the east side of Escondido, from La Costa Canyon all the way, I mean, from La Costa all the way up to Fallbrook, and I know almost all the liquor stores. I know all the retail centers, Walmarts, Targets, Sprouts. I sell to all these stores. Albertsons, Vons, uh, Stater Brothers. There is plenty of access to liquor and wine in our community. We don't need any more right in our own backyard. Um, I am very familiar with, uh, the Village Spirit Shop in Encinitas, as I lived there before I moved to, uh, the Shadow Ridge area. And I kinda moved over there because of the community that it brings to this neighborhood, and also to my family, and even though my kids have graduated and have moved on, I see all these children that live in our community, my neighbors, and I wanna see these kids grow up in an environment that is sustainable for the ideals of Vista, for the council members, for their children, for their children who have moved on, who want to come back and raise their families. So, all's I'm gonna say is, I think there's other opportunities. There's plenty of places to go buy wine and spirits, and as I make a living in this industry, I also know the repercussions of this industry, and the repercussions are not pretty. You have a low crime index, as stated by, um, the young lady here, but I guarantee you, the reason why that low crime index is there is due to the fact that we do not have a liquor store there. And you want to differentiate the name between a fine wine and spirit and liquor? It, there is no differential. It is the same. It's a liquor store is a liquor store, and what it brings is the clientele and the people to those environments that will change the aspect of this community. And so, I ask you to oppose this, please. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dave Urban, followed by Jason Britton. Is he here? Did I pronounce it wrong? U-R-B-I-N, Dave Urban? Did he leave? Okay, okay. Jason Britton, he'll be followed by Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, all. Um, thank you for taking the time to listen to our comments. Um, I just want to express my opposition to this liquor store. Um, I, some people have mentioned comments about how this liquor store could impact the California Summit neighborhood, which it definitely will. And so, it's a residential neighborhood. During the weekday, it's very quiet. There's almost nobody around, and if the liquor store's open during the day, we all know that alcohol contributes to things like petty crime, theft, and so forth, so there's a concern that there might be an increase in petty crimes throughout the neighborhood. There's already, there's been some stories and anecdotal tales going around that some of the houses have been broken into during the day, during the weekdays, for example. So, the concern is if we have a liquor store, this could increase that level of petty theft in the neighborhood. But even outside of this neighborhood, you know, um, there's two things I would like to bring up. One is, um, the liquor store is to be centered within the business park itself. There's a lot of dark areas in, in the business park, in after-hours, there's a lot of areas that are very isolated. Now, we can hear people driving at high speed, a lot of teenagers and whatnot, driving through the neighborhoods because there's like no traffic lights, it's all open, they speed and so forth. If a liquor store is available up until at least ten o'clock in the evening, um, there's nothing to keep these people from going into these isolated areas and drinking, and this poses a risk to the public safety through intoxication, speeding, and so forth, not just within the California Summit neighborhood, but also in the business park area as well. Also, um, although there's just, I guess, two licenses currently for, for alcohol, um, the CBS and the Albertsons, and I think other people have mentioned, there's other places that sell alcohol in the business park area. There's the Iron Fist Brewing, there's the California Fruit Wine Business that's farther up on, um, Sycamore, and then there's potentially the Indian Joe Brewing Company as well. So, if we're having all these brewing companies moving into this area, we have a liquor store opening up, plus the existing retail outlets, is South Vista gonna become like a sea of booze effectively? Is this, do we want our neighborhood, our community, to be really just known for, hey, this is the place to come to the party, 'cause there's alcohol available? So, I hope these are things I take into consideration when making your final decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Cliff Kaiser, followed by Matt Young.
Mayor, Council. I know Terry Latham and the, the properties that he has here in, uh, North County, and they are very well-run. He's definitely a community player. He's, uh, helped out in the Vista Chamber. Um, he has been very helpful to Vista Gold Softball in, in offering his rooms at a discounted rate for tournaments that they host. That being said, he may not be there forever, and it's my understanding that this special use permit goes with the property and not with the owner or the leesee. So, we have to take in consideration the long view when we're making the decision to allow this or not. If Terry goes and his great leadership goes, and he's not there to enforce the quality controls that he has in place, um, what do we do as a city to make sure that the follow-on owners or leesees are gonna maintain that place? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Matt Young, followed by, who do I have my glasses for this? Is it Riza Prozian?
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us. I'm just gonna tell you a little anecdote and then a couple facts that hopefully describe my opposition to the liquor store. And excuse me, it's been about twenty years since I publicly spoke. Um, it was August sixth, so, three weeks ago, and, uh, my wife and I put the kids down to sleep about eight-thirty. Okay, sorry. About eight-thirty at night. It was a Monday night. Put 'em down, went to go in, put on some reality TV or whatever, and went to bed. It was about nine-thirty. It's hot. I have air, but I don't run it, you know, just try to conserve and stuff. So, our windows are open, and you could just, it's just noisy, like, I'm like, babe, it's not a bar, what is that? It's the hotel. So, I walked out, walked out to my back fence, and it was nine forty-five on a Monday night, and I counted, there was thirty-seven people in the pool and spa, and it backs right up, right up to my house. So, basically, if they're partying, I'm partying, but it's a Monday, so it's weird. The hotel's kinda weird. It's not a typical Friday night, Saturday night thing. It's more of corporate, you know, relocation, stuff like that. So, they have, uh, uh, deals where they all come in or whatever, so, um, basically, it, they're supposed to shut it down at ten o'clock, and at ten oh five, I have to call. So, since January first of this year, I've called the hotel nineteen times at ten oh five to ask them to please ask the people to get out of the pool on a weekday. That's my anecdote, ha-ha. My fact to, to add to that is, I bought my house January, we closed Escrow January third of oh-eight. I paid five seventy-one for it. On one-one of twelve, it appraised for three ninety-two. That's a thirty-one percent drop, or a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. So, every penny that my wife and I made for ten years is gone. I have nothing. The average drop for nine-two-oh-eight-one in that same time period was nineteen percent. My house dropped thirty-one. That's an extra twelve percent, or sixty-eight thousand dollars. So, that's basically kinda the, the explained devaluation that my house has because it has a three-story hotel fifty feet from my back door. So, that being said, I think if you throw a bunch of accessible liquor thirty feet from people that are basically up late on a Monday night anyway, I just think it's gonna just make a, kinda something that's, no offense, not that great and exacerbate, it's just gonna be worse. And don't get me wrong, I love beer. I love wine, but I buy it at Albertsons, and, and I drink it on usually Saturday night. So, that's my, that's my attempt at organizing my opposition to the, to that.
Thank you. Riza Prozian? Is that close? Okay. That's followed by Wilma Wilsenski. Okay.
Good, uh, good evening, Mayor, Councilman.
Speak right into your microphone so we can hear you.
That's better?
Yeah, that's better.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Councilmember. Uh, I'm opposed to this, um, opening that liquor store as well. I live in, for several years, in this neighborhood. I just wanna go with, uh, I don't wanna go through the whole thing that all my neighbors tell us all. The whole issue is the safety, uh, the, the increase in the crime, the available, all this story in the neighborhood, again, that it was a very poor map. If you go with the circle around three mile in that neighborhood, you, at least you can find seven to ten places that you can buy the alcohol as well. So, all these issues gather to, uh, in the fact that at least more than seventy-eight percent of the, uh, people sign petition, uh, just in a very short period of the time without the noticing everybody in this neighborhood. Majority of the people opposed, that live in the Brookhaven, East, uh, Eastbrook, Baxter Canyon, and Mountain Pass, all of them are opposed to this, uh, opening this, uh, store. And I'm glad that, actually, the, the last item before this item was about the speed bump. You see all the facts and numbers, how increasing the traffic, and one of the neighbor's gentlemen said that, assume that we are adding the store for, uh, liquor store as well and adding the volume up to those driver, and what's gonna happen, at least, at least even just one drunken driver going through that neighborhood, and what's gonna happen? So, please, uh, do your own judgment if really want, uh, if, if you really put on our shoe and see that if you really live in that neighborhood, do you agree with this opening this store as well or not? Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. William Wilsenski? Did I say that right?
Yeah, you did. Very good.
Close, okay. And then after that's Floyd Graves.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um, I am a homeowner. Been there since the-
I am a homeowner, been there since the track was built about 17 years ago. And I'd just like to say that I'm a small business owner. I've been self-employed for about 32 years. And when my wife and I relocated from Shatter Edge down to this house because we needed a bigger piece of property for our growing family, or a bigger house, we really liked the area, and we still like it. Granted, it has changed a lot since Merle's opened up to Palomar. It's changed dramatically. Traffic, you know, stores, development, and everything. And we knew that was gonna happen. You know, that was, we were there for probably 15 years before anything went in, but we knew someday something was gonna come in, and we were okay with that. And I wanna say, a couple of years ago, when the hotel was just under construction, I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Lathrum, and talked to him, and he, you know, kinda let everybody know what was going on in there, and I respected him. But I didn't really know him, and I don't know if I, if I really believed him, like, you know, what he said as far as the quality of tenants. And I wanna commend him, if he's still here, I believe he's still here, that he kept his word, you know. I live a couple of doors down from that, and we walk our dog probably four nights a week through the neighborhood, my wife and I. I have a son that still goes to the high school. So we're vested in the community, and we don't mind the hotel. I mean, yeah, you hear some noise every once in a while, but when you buy a piece of property with that big of a lot, you know, something's gonna go in there eventually. And in this economy, you know, he didn't just lease out to different people, who he has in there, we're real happy with. But I will say that I definitely oppose the liquor store because there's so many other places so close that sell alcohol, beer, wine, liquor, whatever you wanna call it, we don't need it right in our backyard, you know. And it's just, even in this economy, it seems to be filling up pretty quick. So I think if we got maybe a little bit more selective, and just maybe another restaurant, he mentioned a couple of different restaurants going in, something like that, but just not another liquor store, because there's so many of them in such a close proximity. And then also, like somebody else said, with the industrial area so close by, it's, it's pretty busy up till about 6 o'clock. But after 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, it quiets down, it's still pretty quiet, and it's, it's pretty desolate, especially in the industrial park. And I just feel you're gonna have people coming in. If somebody's coming that late at night to buy liquor, they're probably gonna consume it right then and there, or want some more. And that's when I think your problems are gonna start. So I just ask, I don't want it in my backyard, and I ask all of you sitting up here, and Mr. Lathrum, would you guys want a liquor store in your backyard? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Floyd Graves, followed by Nancy Henchler.
Good evening again, councilmembers, Mayor. The last time we spoke, I had asked about the Chevron and the provisions there about the alcohol. So I just wanted to see if Mr. Conley had an update on that.
For the council's information, the Chevron Station at the corner has submitted a request for a special use permit for alcohol. Mr. Graves had asked in meetings with the staff prior if their prior approval restricted them from selling alcohol in the future, in other words, when the gas station was built. And in fact, upon our research, we determined that they did apply for a special use permit to sell alcohol back in 1995. It was heard and denied by the Planning Commission and the City Council. But that does not restrict them from reapplying, and so they have reapplied, and that will go forward for the Planning Commission's consideration.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm not gonna, pretty much everybody's touched that our community is, it's a family community. And obviously, with the speed bumps being put in because we're trying to address the volume with the liquor store, proposed liquor store coming in, it's just gonna increase, that's, that's obvious. My fear is that a lot of the residents with their children, I take my daughter after hours, and she rides her bike in the empty parking lot because we can't do it on the street at night. So my fear is, as well as a lot of other parents, and I know everybody sitting up here in one way or another is a grandparent, parent, great-grandparents, so I know you can sympathize with that. The fear is, is that the kids will kind of be exposed to this, even though the proposed alcohol store owner is gonna be responsible and have locked containers. But he's also gonna sell other little goodies, and the fear is, is that the kids are gonna be exposed to this. And although they may not go in there by themselves, it's there to see. And being that it's a family-oriented, and also too, I am an alcohol drinker, but I go down, five minutes down the road to purchase my alcohol. And I've been doing it for seven years, and I will continue to do it, even with this, even if hopefully it doesn't get open. But I will continue to do that, because we don't need this in our backyard, and this proposed liquor store is literally in our backyard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Nancy Henchler?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm delighted so many of my neighbors have already come and made the point I was gonna make. So I just wanted to say that I live on Brookhaven Pass. I oppose this, and it would, this Melrose Wine and Spirits would only benefit the hotel. All of the neighbors I've spoken with would prefer to buy their alcohol somewhere else. There is the California Fruit and Wine Winery down the street. There's an Iron Fist Brewery right down the street. If this is allowed to go in, I would no longer allow my 11-year-old to go to the park that's right there by herself. To pass this measure would to completely ignore the community's wishes, and I hope it doesn't go through. Thank you.
Thank you. Is, did Dave Urban ever come back? Is Dave Urban here? I don't see him, okay. Then I have one, I have a couple more. I have, is Frank Yosef, he's the, next to the owner? Do you wanna say anything? No? Okay. And how about Jim Hernandez?
Yes, Madam Mayor, City Council, Jim Hernandez, the architect of record for the project. And I'm here to answer any questions, but I would like to take just a bit of a different vein. Your ordinance requires this to be a special use permit. I do appreciate the neighbors bringing up their speculation on what potentially can happen and what might happen. We have had opportunity to talk with city staff and Planning Commission relative to the requirements that were added to this special use permit to ensure that, to the neighborhood, that some of the fears that they have brought this evening would be mitigated. And Frank Yosef is here, the owner, he was uncomfortable speaking in public, but he would certainly come up and answer any questions he has, as he did about his facility in Encinitas for the Planning Commission. We have, we have accomplished every requirement that the city staff has presented. I appreciate the discussion about the number of facilities, but the ordinance does not preclude having a facility here that meets all of your regulations and the additional recommendations for this facility. So with that, I hope you would take that into consideration, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them as the architect of record.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions from him? Okay.
Thank you.
Actually, that's our last speaker. So I would then ask for any comments from the council, or discussion. Do you wanna close the public hearing, then?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and then we'll have discussion with the council. Okay, Councilmember Lopez.
I've been out to the area here lately, checking it out. Mr. Lathrum has done a great job with that center. But I also looked at a couple of the residents, their homes that are behind the, behind the hotel there. And I've been up here a while now, and when the neighborhood was here fighting Home Depot, you lost during that time. And Home Depot went in. I tried to get some, some things on the walls, to glass, to help, help out the noise, and it didn't work out. You were here against the, but it, it seems like it's, it's not really a bad thing to have Home Depot there. The, the property that has the, the motorhomes and all that, that's, you were against that, and it seemed like, you know, it turned out to be a pretty good project. And, but when you bought that property, you knew the property next to you was, was empty, and there was, it was a field, and you knew that something was gonna go in there. And you didn't know what was gonna go in there, but, but you were next to it, and a commercial went in, because it was owned that. And so Mr. Lathrum has done a great job. But each time you have come up here, you have fought and you have lost each time. And so even though it's, it's, it's a business, and I normally support businesses, and this, this particular one, this building, I think that I would like to see more food establishments with, with liquor. And I am sorry, Mr. Lathrum, but I'm gonna oppose this one this time. Thank you.
Anybody else? You guys wanna talk? Everybody wants to talk? Councilmember Coles?
Yeah, I'll make a comment. Yeah, I, I listened to some, some of the neighbors who came to speak to a couple of us councilmembers in opposition to this, and, and I listened primarily with the, the concern of what it might, how it might affect young people in a neighborhood, because that's to me a kind of a serious issue where there might be, you know, a gateway into accessing abusive substances for young people. So, and I have been in liquor establishments that sell spice, they sell bath salts, they sell drug paraphernalia, and they can sell it to anybody of any age because it's, it's legal. So I looked at this from the point of view of how this might be something other than just a, a store where people would responsibly buy alcoholic beverages. I, I understood that the proprietor has a store in Encinita, so I went down yesterday. I was on my way home from San Diego with my wife. We stopped in, I looked at the neighborhood, I looked, went inside the store. I didn't say who I was or where I was from. Bought a cold bottle of root beer, and my wife and I both walked around the establishment. I looked for things that might be attractive or commercially marketable to, to young people. Or something, some, in some manner, might be abusive of the neighborhood. And I didn't say anything. It was, it was, the biggest portion of the store was wines. There was a section with snack foods, cold drinks, Gatorades, and those kind of things. It did not appear to me to be a typical inner-city liquor store where you've got people laying around. And the neighborhood itself, it's, it's an older little mall, and, but it did not look dilapidated. It didn't look to me like there were, you know, there was a bum clientele there. There were houses in the, in the immediate vicinity. They looked prosperous, nice. I, I really didn't see what we would think of as a deleterious impact on, on that neighborhood. Then, of course, as we came home, we went by the, the center there where this is proposed, and we walked around the area, the neighborhood and so forth, and the proposal didn't seem to be out of character for what is there. The, the discussion of people going in, opening bottles, and getting drunk, and driving through the neighborhood, to me, is a little bit over the top. The idea is, let's get restaurants in there where people can buy their wine and alcohol there. They're more likely to get drunk there and drive around the neighborhood, because it takes time for the alcohol to affect, you know, driving and that sort of thing. And we imposed conditions on this to, to make it impractical, or at least difficult, for immediate usage of the alcohol. They can't sell single, single containers. It's primarily, I mean, the focus of what I saw in the other store, it was mostly wine. And this, this is a buffer zone between a business park and a residential area that's, you know, always gonna have a certain degree of difference in usage. And this, this center attracts or appeals to the business clientele from the business park who are there for maybe two weeks, or two months, or six weeks for a business assignment. We, my family, we frequent the area because we like Mrs. Tacos. There are, there's signage there that promotes beer and, and alcohol consumption. And this store is not allowed to have anything to, to promote liquor sales, or, you know, that sort of thing. I, I think they've, they've done a pretty good job of complying to things even more restrictive than the Sheriff's Department requested. They've, they have certainly limited their original application to conform to what we hope is a very restrictive type of liquor sales, or wine sales there. And then, to top that, we, we've had this come before the Planning Commission, and we have a Planning Commission that has a hard job to do every week and every month when we have applications for lots of different things to go up in our city. And we've been fortunate to have some very reliable, responsible volunteers to help us analyze the details of every kind of application that comes before us, look at the ordinances, look at the impact that, that things might have on our city, and, and they've recommended to, to approve this. I, I have one, one question, Mr. Conley, that you might be able to answer, and that is, if in fact this were to deteriorate into something less than what we're anticipating, what, what leverage do we have to make the, this conform to the kind of establishment that has been proposed to us?
The purpose of a special use permit essentially is to regulate the use, so the cities, the cities require to make certain findings that it's not gonna negatively impact the area, and impose conditions to make sure that those impacts don't occur. And that's part of the staff recommendation tonight. The City Council or the Planning Commission has the ability to review a use permit at any time if there are indications that there are problems, or what was intended in the conditions isn't being met. At the council level, or the Planning Commission level, or the staff level, those issues can be brought back and reheard. Additional conditions can be imposed on the use permit, or the use permit can be terminated if, you know, there's real problems that can't be solved. So the city does have the ability to revisit this, and in a number of applications where there is significant opposition, there have been conditions included that require it to come back before the approving body within a certain amount of time to reevaluate it.
That's what I wanted to hear. We, we certainly could reevaluate this in the future. One of the things that came up, and I'm, I'm glad it did come up, was the topic of the Chevron Station getting a use permit to sell alcoholic beverages in there, and I will oppose that, even if I have to bring it for appeal to the, to the council, because I don't think gas stations should be a place where people can go in. Let me finish, let me finish. A, a gas station is not the appropriate place to sell single, because they would be wanting to sell single.
Okay, um, come on.
Well, anyway, let me, let, let me, am I, that, I, I just don't think gas stations and alcohol should be mixed. I don't even think that's laughable. That is not really a laughable thing. People who are driving should not be able to fill their tank, go in, pay for the gas, buy a bottle of beer, and take off. In a, in a, okay, all right.
Listen, you want me to call, I'll call a recess, and then we can take 10 minutes and take a break, if you wanna do that, or you can be courteous, courteous.
The store being proposed is not- The store being proposed is not designed or established or even accommodating for people to stop in for a quick alcoholic beverage. It's, that's not the design of that store. That is not what I saw when I observed at length the, the store that this proprietor has in operation in, in Sanitas. It's not a place where people go in and pop a cork and start drinking.
Thank you, Councilor.
So, with that, that in mind, I'll make a motion to approve this, this.
Thank you, Councilor Coles. Councilor Aguilera.
Yes. Mr. Conley, there's about 30 modifications, I guess, to this special use permit. Is that correct?
Are you referring to the sheriff's conditions?
Well, there's sheriff's conditions, looks like maybe some city conditions. So, I was just wondering if we could go through, not all 30, but maybe three or four. I've highlighted a few that I would like to explain, purpose of those conditions being in there and, and why they were added. I mean, the first one that stood out was the notice shall be served, signs posted prohibiting loitering on the premises, including the parking area in accordance with the city code. Are there other ones that, that are significant that the neighbors would be looking for?
I think we've covered most of them in the presentation tonight. The major issues raised by the sheriff's department were the provision of locking doors so that it limits, excuse me, how many, how they sell the products in the store that are in the coolers. There's limitations on the advertising on the exterior of the business. You can't have any sale signs. The only signage there allowed is their signage for the store itself. There's video camera surveillance required, the sheriff's department. No single sales, which is a standard requirement now for all liquor establishments.
Could you tell me where that is? That's the one I've been looking for?
It's, I believe, number 13, which is on page seven of 49.
Okay, so the, the part, I guess, it says prepackaged, multi-unit quantities?
Correct. It has to be in groups or quantities, more than one, if they're sold individually at the store.
Okay. And then number 12, the purpose of that, it says no alcoholic content, wines with alcoholic content of greater than 15% are not allowed?
Correct. And that's in response to the types of wine you can buy, high alcohol content, that are fairly popular among low socioeconomic groups.
Got it. Okay. So, we covered the video. So, I have a question. I know we track for bars and even the breweries and that type of thing. The sheriff tries to track where people, when they pick them up for a DUI, they try to track those, where those people are coming from. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, do we get reports of people coming from a liquor store or, or anything like that or?
I, I'd probably refer that question to sheriff's captains since they get the majority of those complaints, but the majority of the information that comes back to the city through the sheriff's department is typically related to establishments such as bars and restaurants. I can't think of anywhere we've had liquor stores. I'll defer to the city manager.
No, but if somebody is arrested for a DUI, obviously the sheriff's department asks questions and tries to determine where the last point of alcohol was sold. Typically, it's in an establishment that's an onsite use, but there are times where somebody may have purchased alcohol from an off, you know, off-site establishment like an Albertson's or a liquor store or whatever it might be and gone to an area or a friend's house and, and got drunk or inebriated, but it's very difficult to pin it back on the liquor store because they're typically not drinking it in the liquor store, the Albertson parking lot. They're consuming it somewhere else off-site.
All right. And then my last question has to do with D, violation of conditions. I think Councilman Coles asked this question, but I just want to make sure that it's covered. It says section 18 dash or dot 74, dot 280. What is, what is that?
That's the requirement for a special use permit, which allows us to revisit the use permit and make modifications or rescind the permit.
Okay, and we can do that at any time?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So, no, you want to say that? Okay. This has been very tough for me. I, I've been going, I go both ways. I understand what your concerns are and I understand, and I also understand the business, but this, this is what's kind of pushing me one way is that a 7-Eleven could come in there or a, or the gas station that's applied for a license. I think this store would be, I would, I would approve this store above those other two. If this store is approved, then I, then I don't have to approve a 7-Eleven or a gas station and I can say, no, we already have a store there and this is a, more of a quality store than would be a 7-Eleven, which would sell singles or the gas station, which would probably do the same thing. So, that, that pushes me toward approving this because of that reason, because it would be a better store for you to have than the other two. And the other two are going to come, they'll, they'll be coming. So, anyway.
Do you have a second on the, on the motion? Did I ever get one?
So, anyway, so I, I, I understand, I understand where you're coming from. It's, it's, it's a tough one, but it, it also, like a bail bonds could go in there or something like that, that maybe wouldn't need a special use permit. So, there, there are other stores that might not be as desirable, be less desirable than, than that. So, anyway, so I, I guess.
I'll make a second.
Okay. So, I have a motion and a second. So, if there's no more, then I would call for the vote. So, it goes 3-2. So, that motion passes. So, moving on, I will go to oral communications. Okay, I, I understand that there's, okay, listen, we, we need you to leave. We need to finish our meeting here. Okay, so moving on, I have three, three speakers. I have Jenny Verver, Ver, Veric. Is Jenny here still? You're next.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and staff. Hope to turn the tide just a bit, a little different conversation. Thank you, Steve, for responding to my email. I appreciated that. I did send you an email about North County Lifeline and I come before you, first of all, to thank you for your service to our community as a former member and president of the school board, Mr. School Board, Vista Unified School District. I know that there are both challenges and blessings in this service and I'm grateful for your service. One of the blessings that, that occurred while I was on the school board was certainly the hiring of Dave Coles. And so, it's good to revisit.
He's the only one that came up to Los Banos.
I had to go to Los Banos for that and you can't get there from here. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you. I'm actually here tonight on behalf of North County Lifeline. I don't know how much you know about North County Lifeline, but North County Lifeline was begun in Vista in 1969 as an organization response to concerns about youth and it has expanded over the years. And because its birthplace was here, I come to you as a representative to both tell you more about North County Lifeline and to invite you to an event. Let me just give you a few statistics about what your North County Lifeline accomplishes in a, in a given fiscal year. There are several programs, the program services that include youth, for example. In one fiscal year recently, there were 3,000, 3,223 clients served with 63,900 client contacts just in one year. Other services, including emergency assistance, employment services, rent assistance, transitional housing, there were 4,169 clients served with 102,147 client contact. And finally, other program services such as free tax preparation, financial literacy workshop, legal clinic, resolution dispute and so forth, 3,746 clients were served with a total of 7,950 client contacts. All of that in one year for a grand total of 29,174 individual clients with 192,055 client contacts. So, needless to say, your North County Lifeline serves this community and the greater North County community in a pretty amazing way. But I also come to celebrate with you something that happens every day after school.
And I need you to wrap up pretty quickly.
Okay, and that is the afternoon program. And the program that I'm coming to share with you and hope you will help support us is the after-school program where kids do art.
That's beautiful.
And this was done by one of our after-school kids. Our program, our event is It's Now, It's Wow in Oceanside at the Oceanside Museum, September the 22nd at 6 o'clock. I have tickets here and I would love to be able to go to the Oceanside City Council meeting tomorrow night, which I'm going to do, and tell the Oceanside City Council that every city council member here purchased one of these tickets and challenge them to do the same.
Okay, I need you to wrap up.
I'm finished and I'm just going to leave some material with you.
Thank you.
How much are the tickets, Jenny?
How much are the tickets? Forty dollars? Food and beer, oh, don't, don't talk about beer tonight.
I will be here after the meeting.
Okay, our next speaker, Brett Schatzenbach. You actually have two things here.
Yes, thank you for hearing me. Feels like, feels like school just let out or something. The first item I have is about the local bidder preference policy that I know that you passed a few months ago and the chamber appreciates you taking time to consider that and making amendments to an outdated policy that had been in existence for quite some time. But we do have some concerns about the new policy. The chamber would like to go on record as officially stating that we're concerned about the matching aspect of the local bidder preference policy that you passed. Specifically, the concerns are that a, a matching policy would encourage a local company, if they were to come in and say, okay, well, we were within 3% or 4% of the lowest bid and now you're offering us to, to lower our bid to match that lower policy. We feel like it sends a message that they could interpret as, well, what corners can we cut to match that policy or to match that price? Or likewise, and also something that we think would be bad for the city, would be to say, well, we'll go ahead and match that policy because then we'll look for ways to make it up. We'll make it up and change orders or whatnot. So, we think that that's a danger that's inherent in the current policy that you passed. Secondly, we're concerned that, or not concerned, but we feel like the, the matching policy discounts the value of shopping local. You know, we are a big advocate of shopping local on the retail side and, and we do those programs and the holidays and whatnot in conjunction with the VVBA and, and with city support, but we feel like this matching policy totally discounts that whole value of shopping local and the trickle-down effect that that local dollar has in this community. Granted, and as staff has, has explained to you on other occasions, there are not a lot of good studies specifically on local bidder preference policies and how they affect the economy. There's not been great research done in those areas. There have been lots of studies on, in tourist arenas. There's been, you know, the, the federal government does a lot of work to show how the stimulus money they put out there, how it affects the gross national product and how, gross domestic product and how it affects employment in our wonderful country and things like that. And none of those are exact matches to this kind of a thing, but they all have tangents that we can pull from and, and just in a common sense way know that when you spend a dollar with a company here in Vista, it creates jobs. Those jobs turn into houses. They also turn into purchases of a retail nature and so that dollar gets spent here and stays here and helps here. So, our policy that we're encouraging you to consider to do is a local bidder preference of 5%, not a matching one, but a 5% for contracts under a million, a local bidder preference of 2% for contracts a million dollars or higher and that to define local as companies that have had a valid Vista business license for at least six months and operate within the city limits, to keep it simple. So, that's our recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. And.
Could I just ask?
Yes.
When we look at the profile of the company, which that's an important aspect of.
Talk on your microphone so they can have it on, on tape.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would, would we also be looking at the profile of their employees because that, you know, a, a company could be based here with their license and so forth and the employees living in Oceanside, San Marcos and whatever. And certainly, I, I, I've always encouraged us to stay local where we can, where we get the bang for our buck. I mean, I certainly don't want to lower the quality of what we're getting, but in, in, you know, peeling back the onion, will we have access to the, the deeper part of the company structure?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question and, and we would love to be able to kind of monitor that and audit that, but it puts a huge burden. If, if that were to be built into the, the fabric of a policy, it would put a huge burden on staff from, from our opinion and it would be very challenging for city staff to really audit that and stay on top of that. And so, I, I, I like that thought and we're in favor of that line of thinking. It's just from a practical standpoint, we didn't come on, in our recommendations, we didn't throw that in because we thought it's probably not practical for a city to be able to really audit a company's employees and really keep on top of. And plus, companies are constantly changing with turnover. So, so we didn't put that in. We kept it simple in defining the company, even a little simpler, I believe, than what your policy that you passed back in April, I believe it was, a little simpler even than you came up with just because we know the realities of the staff and the staff does a great job, but they're shorthanded and so we don't see it's practical for them to keep on top of those, those things.
Well, it'll keep a company from coming in, you know, knowing they're going to have a multimillion dollar contractor coming in, getting their, I mean, it takes them two years to get to their project, whatever, they come in and get their business license so they get 5%, which would be a huge.
Sure. I mean, that's a valid concern. You could, you could say that maybe they should have a license for a little bit longer. I mean, we put six months to try and avoid that. We don't want people just carpet bagging, but, and, and council certainly could think maybe it should be a year they have to have had a license before they could be considered a local company. That would be valid. I'm not, not opposed to that because we do, we're, we're definitely interested in true local companies.
Well, there's also companies, the companies based in Carlsbad and almost all their employees work in, are Vista, you know.
We would support that wholeheartedly in talking with staff, though we know that there's a hesitancy to, to allow any kind of preference beyond city limits only because of legalities that they've kind of discussed in their research. We would be supportive of, you know, when we had our study done by the Cal State San Marcos senior experience team, they did have recommendations in kind of concentric circles, if you will, radiating out from city limits, but our, again, our initial discussions with staff was that they didn't feel comfortable putting things beyond city limits just because of legalities and where they, you know, where they thought they could go. We would be supportive of those things because we agree. You know, there are companies like, you know, Carlsbad, Escondido, whatnot, that might be bidding, that have lots of employees from, who live here and, and we would be supportive of that. That's not something we're against if, if that's a direction you go.
Okay, we're, he said, we're having too detailed a discussion here. So, so moving on to the next item.
So, I also sent this all to you. The Chamber of Commerce is in favor of a implementation of a PACE program and I know city staff are looking into different, there are several different versions of PACE that are circulating right now. PACE is a, a public-private form of paying for improvements that would increase energy efficiency and things like that for businesses and residents. The chamber is in favor of these PACE programs and would like to encourage the city to find a, a program that meets, you know, staff guidelines and that we could implement one in this community. The basic, you're probably familiar with PACE, but the basic idea is these things pass to a property owner's tax bill. And so, the city works as a mechanism of getting these onto the tax bill. One of the programs that we had a presentation for at the chamber office, that particular program, PACE program, would actually even reimburse the city for any staff hours needed to implement it onto the tax bill. So, there's truly, would be no cost to the city. And these programs existed a few years ago, but there were some difficulties in the financing. There was not really any true financing behind them, but that has changed now. There's, there's actually some true money behind them and I don't have all those details. However, I know. However, I know from talking to Kevin Hamm and other staffers, that they are being looked at, and we want to encourage you to implement one into the city of Vista. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I say something?
Okay, Frank.
Just real quick. Do you know when Shop Vista program was started?
I do not.
Okay, I'll give you some history.
That's all we need.
Huh?
That's all we need.
Yeah. Back in the, back in the early 80s, late 70s, the Chamber of Commerce, at that time, they used to have this gala, big dinner that they used to produce here. And in Vista, there were several catering companies, and the chamber decided to go out of town with their, with the company. And so, from there, it started the Shop Vista, back in the 80s, because, but you preach it, got to follow through, too.
Oh, absolutely.
I know you're trying very hard, and so is the city here, trying very hard now, too. So, that's part of, that's when it started, back in the 80s.
Thank you, Frank.
I was a little tight back then, so.
Yeah, I know you were.
Okay, so, moving on, comments. Frank?
Nothing.
Yay. Councilor Coles?
I probably made more comments than I should have already.
Good job.
Really?
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment, and welcome our sheriff. I got a chance to actually meet him at the Night Out Against Crime. And it was a perfect setting, obviously, to meet the sheriff, and speak with several of the deputy sheriffs there. So, it was a good night, it was well-attended, there was hundreds of people there, so it was, it was a good event, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Steve?
Yeah. You know, I got, heard this over the weekend, and I thought, I have to comment on this. Neil Armstrong passed this weekend, and I thought, you know, for myself, I can just remember that decade, there was a lot of strife going on, there was political assassinations going on, there was student protests going on, and all of a sudden, we landed on the moon, and it just like the world stood still for a moment, and we all reflected on who we are as humans, and I just thought the world got a little smaller, and things got better. So, sorry to see him go.
Yeah.
But, on a good note, my son's coming home this weekend after a year and a half overseas, so I'm looking forward to that.
Now, that is fun. I have a couple of things. Anything Goes, the third night of the Mood Light Show is underway. I went to see it, it was, it's a great show, great dancing, by the way, tap dancing, which is, it was just outstanding. So, if you get a chance, go see that. I want to congratulate Chief, Battalion Chief Jeff Han, who recently was certified as executive fire officer by the United States Fire Academy. This is a four-year commitment on the part of Chief Han, and it required attending graduate level classes, and completing four separate thesis projects. It's a significant accomplishment by Chief Han, and the fire department, and the city. So, we're congratulating him. And as the reported in the news media, recently, there's been a spate of vandalism at Buena Vista Ball Fields, the office and the snack bar there, the building. So, we're kind of, we're very disappointed that this kind of behavior would occur, as it only hurts our local youth and our recreation programs. But, we're pleased that Crime Stoppers has gotten involved, and I actually saw that online, and has offered a reward for information about the crimes. The Sheriff's Department is increasing patrols in the area, and we hope this puts an end to this. And it's just amazing to me that kids, other kids would go in and destroy that for the kids. It's so sad that they would do that, so. Anyway, and with that, I guess I'll, wish everybody a happy Labor Day weekend, coming up. So, and I'll pass it on to our city manager.
I have no further comments.
Whoa, none from him either. And our city attorney?
No comments, but I hope everyone has a great holiday weekend.
How about Kathy Valdez? Anything to say tonight? Just glad to go home, it's time for bed. Okay, we are adjourned.